Yes, ma'am.
Hello, hello.
There it goes.
Hello. Hi, everyone. If you can please find your seats, we will get started in a moment. Okay, everyone. The time is currently 9:04. It is October 14th and we are here in the Doñana County Board of County Commissioners Chambers for our regularly scheduled county commission meeting. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. First up, we do have a moment of silence. If you are able to stand, if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Brandy, will you please roll call the commission for determination of quorum?
Commissioner Gómez.
Present.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Present.
Vice Chair Chaparro.
Present.
Chair Shaw Doranández.
Present. We are all here. We do have quorum this morning. The commission convenes as the Board of County Commissioners and the County Board of Finance in open session. County Manager Andrews, is there any changes to the agenda this morning?
Morning, sir. Good morning, everyone. No changes to the agenda today, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Moving on, we do have our consent agenda, which the board will be asked to approve by one motion, the following items of reoccurring or routine business, and we have a lot. It's items number one through 21 today. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair.
Before we have, before we move on, I'd like to pull agenda item three, 13, 14, 18, 19, 20, 21 for discussion.
Okay. So you're pulling them, but are you approving the rest, or what is the intent on that?
So, thank you for reminding me of the motion. I move to approve the rest of the consent agenda with the exception of three, 13, 14, 18, 19, 20, 21.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 15, 16, 17, and to pull for separate consideration, items number three, 13, 14, 18, 19, 20, and 21. Commissioners, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Chaparro and a second by Commissioner Gómez. Any other further comments on that?
Mr. Chair, I have one question about item, number, let's see, the one about detention center. I think it's number four.
Number four, which is the detention center budget for capital outlay requirements?
I'm just curious as to why we need 60 tasers and 10 other devices. What does that mean? Do we have somebody to answer that?
Oh, we just...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Have we used tasers before?
Yes, sir. We currently have an allotment of tasers. Most of them are out of warranty, in need of repair and/or replacement, and this is basically getting the newest items that Axon has to offer. We're going under a lease agreement, which if they upgrade them, we get the latest and greatest. If they're unable to repair them, they're replaced.
Okay. I'm sorry, what's your name?
Captain Patrick Howie.
Thank you, Captain. What is, what about the other 10 devices?
It's, the tasers are taser 10, so the wording on that is kind of misleading. So there's not 10 other devices, they're taser 10s.
Okay, so should I say 60 tasers and 10 other tasers?
Yes, apparently there was a typo or somebody didn't...
They're called taser 10s. So there's 60 taser 10s, right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And then 150 body worn cameras. So it's only, get rid of the comma and put the comma after devices.
Okay, the body worn cameras, have we had those before?
We have a few body cameras. Due to limitations with IT, retrieving those or storing those has become cumbersome and difficult. With the Axon cameras, they're cloud storage and automatically upload to the cloud for storage.
I'm totally in favor of having a body cam, because just like with the Sheriff's Department, I think having body cams actually either exonerates us from any kind of misbehavior, or it actually shows that we are misbehaving and we need to take different actions. So I'm totally in favor of those. I just wanted to make sure that the tasers were something that we had normally used, because I know we don't have any other weapons in there except for emergencies, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Brandy, with that, can you please roll call us on the agenda items that we have accepted?
Commissioner Gómez.
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Chaparro.
Yes.
Chair Shaw Doranández.
Yes. Motion carries. The items named in the motion are approved. Now for the items that were...
Do you have some resolution numbers?
Oh, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
So we have item number one, 2025-111. Item number six, 2025-112. Item number nine, 2025-113, and 114. Item number 10, 2025-115. Item number 11, 2025-116, and 117. Item number 12, 2025-118. I'm sorry, give me one second. And item 17, 2025-119, and 120.
Wonderful. Thank you, Brandy. Vice Chair Chaparro, you can, we can either move one by one through, or you can do the ones by a separate motion. What would you prefer?
I'd like to, Mr. Chair, go over each one, one by one.
Okay, so I move that we approve item number three on the consent agenda.
One second.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Of course, Madam Vice Chair.
I had a meeting with County Manager on Friday, and I had requested to pull some of these consent items for further discussion. So commencing with number three, in reading the executive summary, this travel has already happened, and it may have been oversight, I'm not sure, but we need to really focus on obtaining commission approval before many's are spent, or travel is done, and to do it afterwards is, it doesn't align with my way of thinking, quite frankly. So I have concern that travel plans are being made without commission approval. Thank you.
Okay. I can cover this, or County Attorney can. Either one.
So, Commissioner, we actually researched this exact issue to figure out where does the authority need to come from, and what was determined was that it's within the County Manager's authority to allow that sort of travel and approve that sort of travel. It is a good practice to go to the commission and discuss that with the commission and obtain your positions on the travel, but it's within, ultimately within County Manager's authority to make that approval.
Thank you, County Attorney, and it may be within his purview, but to alert the commission before until, to alert the commission before as opposed to afterwards, I think would be appropriate moving from this point forward, regardless of whether the County Manager has authority or not, so that the entire commission is aware of things that are happening behind the scenes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. You know, it's my understanding, because we did have, I did have a conversation with the County Manager and also Legal about this, is that the event that they wanted to attend was actually, they were notified of the opportunity after the last board meeting and before this board meeting, and the timeline did not allow them to actually take, well, take action at a board meeting. So the only other option would have been to take an emergency, have an emergency meeting from the board, which is unnecessary since the County Commander already had authority to take action on his own. But we did have a discussion, and I understand, I understand that the discussion was had with more than one Commissioner besides myself, and I personally, I made a personal recommendation to say that since we don't have the time to go ahead and get approval by the board, to go ahead and take action, and we'd approve it after the fact. I think this is a one-off. I agree with Commissioner Chaparro that we should make every effort to get these things approved in advance, but in this situation, it was an unusual circumstance that was called for action to be taken immediately, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none. Brandy?
Commissioner Gómez.
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Chaparro.
Abstain.
Chair Shaw Doranández.
Yes. Motion carries. Item is approved. No, no resolution number, right, Brandy?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 13. I move approval of item number 13.
Second.
We have a motion by myself and a second by Commissioner Reynolds to approve item number 13. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So item number 13 is approving a resolution authorizing an application for strategic water supply funds in the amount of $25 million for a desalination plant in the Santa Teresa Industrial Park with matching funds up to $10 million, 40% from the county pursuant to GRT sharing agreement with Project Jupiter. Again, I did speak with the County Manager regarding, I had my agenda review with the County Manager Friday 13th. There was a family emergency, but in reviewing the executive summary, all I had was a sheet and no other information, so I'd like Ms. Rescon to give me an update on that. Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, how are you?
Pretty good. Mireya with utilities.
Thank you, ma'am.
So this grant is to kick off the desalination plant in the Santa Teresa area. So we're asking for 25 million for Dcel, and then there's also 10 million to study the brackish water in the area.
Okay.
And this is through New Mexico State Environment Department. I'm sorry, please, here you go. It's through the New Mexico State Environment Department?
So, if I may, Mr. Chair. So we are accepting 25 million? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, this is just to apply for the grant.
Thank you.
And we're on the second round of applications. We submitted an initial, basic, and then now we're going to try to submit the second, if you approve.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may move on to number 14, because they seem that they're tied together?
Yes, they are.
Is that all right with everyone?
We would have to amend the motion. I would rather just move on with item number 13, take a vote, and then move on to 14 to keep it nice and simple for Brandy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a comment about 13.
Yes, Commissioner Reynolds, go ahead.
Chaparro is done with her questions?
For now. Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, I noticed here that this is actually simply an application, you know, for the funds, and I also remember that as this board, part of our conversations and work sessions, and even over a year, a year and a half because of the crew of problems, we've been talking about trying to find a way to fund a desalination plant for over two years.
Correct.
So this is, the only thing I see here, and the reason that Project Jupiter is mentioned is simply because there's additional funding available to us that wasn't available to us prior to this project.
Correct.
So the discussion about having a desalination plant, getting one implemented is nothing new. As a matter of fact, when Commissioner, when US Representative Gabe Vosquez was elected, he asked me for 16 items, or asked me for a list of items that I thought were important in this area, and one of those was to get this desalination plant in the Chaparral area and another one in the Santa Teresa area. So this is something that I've been discussing in at least four years, and the only, the only reason that Project Jupiter is mentioned in this is because... And the only, the only reason that Project Jupiter is mentioned in this is because there's additional funding that we didn't have available to us before that. So that's, I want the audience to know that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm supportive of this as well because I know that during, you mentioned, Commissioner Reynolds, the work session that we had, and I remember last year, right before session started, the legislative session, we made desalinization in our county our number one priority, I believe. So this totally ties in with that, so I'm very much so in support of this. Any other comments or questions on item number 13? Seeing none, Brandy, if you'll roll call us, please, on item number 13?
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chaparro?
Yes.
Chair Shal Jordan-Andes?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 13 is approved.
That resolution number is 2025-121.
Okay. Next, I move to approve item number 14.
Second.
We have a motion by myself and a second by Commissioner Sanchez. Vice Chair, go ahead with your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And based on what Ms. Resgon has further explained to me, thank you so much. I don't have any further questions.
Any other comments or questions, commissioners? Seeing none, Brandy?
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chaparro?
Yes.
Chair Shal Jordan-Andes?
Yes. Motion carries. Brandy, go ahead with that resolution number, please.
That number is 2025-122.
Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on, 18, 19, 20, and 21 are all dealing with our fire services and EMS, it seems. Vice Chair, would you be okay if we did a motion for all four at the same time? Or, okay. I move that we approve item number 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Mr. Chair, I think it would be 19, 20, and 21.
It was 18 through 21 is what I marked. Am I right or wrong? Okay. So 18 through 21.
I second the motion.
Okay. Chair, come on up. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So regarding number 18, to purchase an outfit, seven vehicles for fire rescue, that's number 18. Number 19, accept a grant in the amount of $183,249. Number 20, approve resolution to consolidate three fire response districts. And number 21, authorizing the use of $300,000 from the Healthcare Reserve Fund to New Mexico State. So I guess my first question, is this your only job, Fire Chief, or are you associated with the university at this time as well?
Good morning. Andrew Rowan, interim Fire Chief. And Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, I am associated with New Mexico State University.
In what capacity, please?
I am the interim Assistant Vice President of Public Safety.
Thank you. So to move forward, and this is a question for the county manager, how close are we to getting a full-time Fire Chief?
Mr. Lopez, I know we were talking about that just last week. Do you mind giving us an update, sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair. The first screening of applicants that have been received is happening today with the Hiring Committee and they have five names that were provided by HR. They will be reviewing those and then we will know probably by the end of the day which ones they have identified that should be moving forward for the final consideration.
Thank you. So with that in mind, and I appreciate these being put on to a certain degree, but first of all, I think the association with NMSU might raise an ethical conflict, that's my opinion. But if we're so close to getting a full-time Fire Chief, why push through this consolidation of fire districts from an interim Fire Chief when we're a week away from getting a full-time Fire Chief or authorizing movement of money from a Healthcare Reserve Fund to New Mexico State with whom you're already associated? The grant, I don't have that much of a problem for, but purchase of vehicles and everything else, commissioners, colleagues, I think that, why don't we wait for the new Fire Chief to make the decisions that he needs to make before we start spending money, making agreements with NMSU, or consolidating fire districts because we're going to tie the hands of the future Fire Chief that's going to be here in less than a week? And if we're looking at someone at the end of this day, then why push these forward? We can wait two weeks until we have a permanent Fire Chief that can think through of what the county needs and not tie him into, or her, into this. That's just my opinion. I feel very uncomfortable moving forward with these requests when we have somebody in the wings, whomever that person may be. No offense to you, Chief, but to me, you're an interim Fire Chief and I appreciate your hard work throughout these few months, but if we're so close in getting a permanent position that may be with us five years, 10 years, then let's wait until that person comes in to make all these decisions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Reynolds, yes?
I'd like to respond a little bit to that. Actually, working closely with the Fire Department over the last seven years of my career and as a county commissioner and also being on MERV and understanding some of the urgency, sense of urgency we try to accomplish, I'm not sure that delaying these decisions until another Fire Chief would get on board and probably take three to six months to really understand this current situation. I know in every new job I have taken, I don't go in and make changes within the first two months, three months for almost no, any reason. So I believe that the new Fire Chief, even though experienced and qualified to do the job, would probably not have the same insight that we currently have by the existing chief who've been on board for like six months already, right?
Yes, sir.
And so I think, and that's one reason. The other reason is that we're only going to have two more board meetings this year. And usually, in order to get these things ordered and purchased and brought in, it takes like three to six months to get this equipment delivered. And any delay that we have will just delay the opportunity for us to accomplish what needs to be done. I don't, I personally don't believe that these decisions would change based on the new leadership coming to the county either. So I recommend that the board go ahead and approve these and move on and we'll worry about the leadership discussion at a different time.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. So just out of curiosity, or actually not out of curiosity, so number 21 is authorizing the $300,000 from Health Reserve Fund to New Mexico State University's support fire-based emergency medical services, so EMS, which is the ambulance that we've committed countywide, ambulance service. Interim Chief Bowen, they help us outside of NMSU, correct? They service Tortugas, they service a mountain area, they go everywhere, right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. And actually, this, they are currently staffing a vehicle at their expense that is responding to all those areas, to Los Algeles, South Valley, it's gone as far as Anthony for responses.
Wow.
This amount would staff a second vehicle, and this is using part-time EMTs that work special events. One thing I would like to point out is, one of the concerns that's been brought forward is that we don't have enough paramedics or EMT intermediates. They do have those at NMSU. So this would actually staff a second vehicle that would be located somewhere else in the county during peak hours to assist our staff in responding to those calls and not only responding to calls, but responding with that higher level of EMT or higher level of service.
And this is exactly the same thing we did with other municipalities throughout the county to help them stand up their EMS services, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. The reason this didn't come to you at the same time is we had to make sure from NMSU that they had the staffing available. So they, they wanted to ensure that first, they had their own commitments with football games and, and whatnot, but they have confirmed that staffing is available and they do believe that they will be able to staff those two peak hour ambulances that will respond countywide.
Okay. Thank you so much for that.
Yes, sir.
So no matter if interim is here or a new Fire Chief, this is something that we needed to do to serve the residents of Doniana County, so I definitely agree with Commissioner Reynolds on this. This is a, something that we need to do to serve people. Like, we're not going to put people's safety on the line just for a position, that's stupid. Another thing, so the approval of the up, outfit of seven vehicles from Doniana Chalmers, or from Don Chalmers, sorry, whoa.
Yes, sir.
Was that in the original budget for fire?
Yes, sir, it was.
Which this board already voted on?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So we're just finally going to purchase those vehicles that we've already authorized through our budget?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Wonderful, thank you. Accepted grant from the New Mexico Department of Health, NM EMS Bureau in the amount of $183,000 for the purchase of Zoll equipment. Can you explain exactly what Zoll equipment is?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Zoll equipment is the defibrillators that we utilize on the rescues. They're a very critical piece of equipment, especially because they can connect directly with the emergency room digitally and the doctors are able to see all the vitals, the heart rate, and they can give direction to the staff on scene. So this is critical equipment that really helps our staff provide a high level of service to the community.
Perfect. And does the city of Los Cruces also use this exact same software?
Yes, sir, they do.
Cool. Once again, let's serve the residents. Item number 20 is to approve a resolution to consolidate three of the fire response districts. I've read through the, the executive summary on this. I totally understand where it's coming from. I don't necessarily see the issue, but with what is raised about a interim county fire or with interim versus our full-time staffer, I'm okay with waiting until we get someone fully in. I don't see an issue with that.
Could, could I address that?
Of course, please.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, this matter has been in the works for about a year and a half, from my understanding. Chief Cherry had intended to bring it to the board. What it concerns is if this consolidation does not occur, the Santa Teresa District is up for an ISO inspection and that inspection will have to occur immediately if the consolidation does not occur. If the consolidation occurs, we have one year to address any concerns there might be to work with the State Fire Marshal's Office to ensure that we have the highest level of service that we can in those areas. So that, that's one of the reasons for the urgency. I was contacted by the State Fire Marshal's Office. They expressed to me the urgency of doing the inspection. I explained to them that Chief Cherry had planned on this consolidation for a long time but had never come before the board and, and they basically gave me a month to come before the board and, and present this. So that's the urgency there. If we do not, then there would be an inspection. I can tell you the inspection will be affected by the water supply or lack of water supply in the Santa Teresa area. So that was one thing that we were hoping to address in that year that we would have to, to prepare ourselves for that ISO inspection.
Okay. And so the fear, and I see Mr. ACM Lopez wants to speak as well. So a little over a month ago, maybe two months ago, we gave money to crew up for the work on those fire hydrants. That is where this is being tied into, I would assume?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
They, basically, that would give us a chance to get the hydrants in a better condition. That would give us a chance to increase our staffing there. And then my understanding is from the ISO inspectors is that they have a new standard coming up in January that will account for water tenders, which are the tanker trucks that we use to get water to the scenes of a fire. They're going to let that water be included as part of the water supply starting in January. So that would give us the ability to, to ensure that we have the right apparatus stationed in the right areas throughout the county to be able to respond.
That, that makes a lot of sense to me, so this is probably something, especially because I know that Commissioner Reynolds and I know Commissioner Sanchez have also expressed a lot of concern over our ISO rating throughout the years. We're always trying to keep those to where it is the most affordable for our residents. I would not want an inspection to go that quickly when we're doing things here at the county to make sure that we're taking care of these situations. It seems like the timeline is not in our favor, so I, I do understand this. Thank you for explaining the one month from the state to get this done. ACM Lopez, I, oh, you're good. Okay. That makes a lot of sense to me, so thank you. So I, I definitely am in favor of all of these as well.
Yeah, one more comment.
Yes, Commissioner Reynolds.
Mr. Chair, Chief Bowen, I also remember you sent us an email about this about two, three weeks ago as well, telling us why this was such an urgent item. And I remember reading that, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I have one last question. Thank you, sir. So when is this inspection going through, interim chief?
Madam Vice Chair, it would be one year from consolidation. So if you approve this resolution today, that we would have one year to get all of our fire districts, which would be one now. NMSU is currently going to be doing their inspection in the very near future. The reason they were left separate is they do have a very secure water supply at NMSU and they do have a much lower ISO rating that will probably stay somewhat intact because of that water supply. So if, if you approve this resolution today, it would give us one year to get the rest of the county in order for that inspection that would most likely occur in October or November of 2026.
Okay. So in your opinion, and I, I think I know what it's going to be, but, and forgive me because I can't write as fast as everyone was speaking. Would the new Fire Chief not able to make his own decision on consolidating fire districts very quickly upon being named?
Madam Vice Chair, that's, that's a good question. However, as was pointed out, the hiring process will take at least a couple of months. When you look at the medical, they have to go through the background that needs to be conducted. Those things don't happen very quickly. We're going through them right now for our firefighters, so I can tell you, they just take time to do them right. So it would take a couple of months. In that time, I do believe that Santa Teresa would go on to the list to be inspected. If, if we go forward to them and say that basically we wouldn't be considering this again until January, I do believe the State Fire Marshal's Office would have, they definitely have the ability and I do believe they may move forward to go ahead and inspect Santa Teresa. I can tell you because of the water supply, that their ISO rating would most likely change.
Most definitely, actually.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Reynolds?
One more comment. Most, some of my constituents remember that I ran for office because of the fact that we had an ISO rating of 10. And the, the sad thing is, because we are one organization and we get, we don't get an ISO rating for this station or that station or here and there, we get an ISO rating that drops us to 10, it drops the whole county to 10. Now, the impact is, to us personally, is not that bad, but to each one of the individuals in the county, it's significant. For any insurance company that actually bases your homeowner's policy on the ISO rating, one of my constituents, actually their policy went from $4,000 a year to $20,000 a year, okay, in less than two months, when we dropped it to ISO 10. The fact that we have 31 fire hydrants in Santa Teresa area that are unserviceable and we cannot get access to, and this board passed $187,000 budget item in order to repair those, is significant in trying to make sure that we avoid a situation like we faced when I came on board seven years ago. So this is, this is much, the, the idea that the investigator will actually give us another year and give us time to actually fix these fire hydrants is going to save millions of dollars for everybody in the county. I mean, it's, it's not, it doesn't hurt the board, but it hurts every citizen in this county. So this is paramount, in my opinion, that we get this done and get this pushed back as, as much as possible to give us a chance to invest the $40 million we're planning to invest down there to get that water system fixed. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, interim Fire Chief Bowen.
Thank you, sir.
Brandy, go ahead and roll call us on 18, 19, 20, and 21, please.
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Chaparro?
And Mr. Chair, if I may, because these were separated, I don't know how you would like to move forward with the vote because I'm...
Separately, we made a motion to approve all at the same time.
If I may finish, thank you.
That's the motion.
Because they were separated from the rest, and the motion was to put them together, my question is, and maybe this is something for the county attorney, I am in agreement with 18 and 19, but not 20 and 21, and so in order to, I can't vote either way if they're together. Does that make sense? If we're lumping them together, it's difficult to vote on four items on which two I don't agree with.
Okay.
So may I make a motion to...
Ma'am, there's a motion on the table, vice chair, and we are in the middle of voting. That is the motion at hand. We have to vote yes, no, or abstain on the motion at hand.
Abstain, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, motion does pass. Brandy, if you can go ahead with those resolution numbers.
Item number 19, 2025-123. Item number 22, 025-124. Item 21, 2025-125.
Thank you, Brandy. Vice Chair, as far as that goes, I don't know if Attorney Niels, if you can address that, I mean, correct, but just for the future, I know that we, I did ask if you wanted to put them all together, and you did say yes. But is there a way, once we're in the middle of voting on a motion, is there anything that you can do?
Not really, no. There's, the motion can be amended before you begin to vote on it, but once the motion is made and you begin to vote, then you have to vote yes or no, or abstain as the motion was stated.
Okay, thank you so much. Good to know. Moving on, we do have employee recognition, where the commission will recognize Doniana County employees for their years of service to Doniana County, and we do have our assistant county manager, we're here today to celebrate these individuals.
All right, here we go. So we have several employees that we'd like to recognize today, starting with Mr. Gerald Sanchez, who is a detective with the Doniana County Sheriff's Department. He has 10 years of service with Doniana County. Mr. Jackson Simpson is a battalion chief with the fire department, also with 10 years of service. John Gomez is a wastewater operator one with our utilities department with 20 years of service, and Raul Corral is a detention officer with 20 years of service. And last but not least, we have a very special retirement today. If I could have Mr. Salvador Lopez join me up front, please. Mr. Salvador Lopez has dedicated over a decade of service to Doniana County, working in the road department as an equipment operator. He began his career with the county in September of 2013, bringing strong skills, reliability, and a deep commitment to public service. In his role, Mr. Lopez was responsible for the maintenance and improvement of the county's roadway infrastructure, a responsibility he carried out with diligence and skill. His contributions ensure safer and more accessible transportation for residents across the county, reflecting both his technical expertise and his strong sense of duty. His supervisor, Mr. Roman Ramos, shared that during the time he worked with Salvador, he came to know him as a true gentleman and a dedicated coworker. Salvador has always, was always willing to lend a hand, whether it was to assist with work orders, guiding him around county roads, or supporting others in the department. He was known for his helpfulness, kindness, and team spirit, qualities that made him greatly respected and admired. Mr. Ramos stated that Salvador will be deeply missed by all who had the privilege of working alongside him. The county of Doniana extends its sincerest appreciation to Mr. Lopez for his dedicated service and contributions to the community. We congratulate him on his retirement and wish him continued success, health, and fulfillment in the years ahead. Please join me with thanking Mr. Lopez for his service to our community.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. Okay. Along the same lines, we do have employee special recognition today, where the Human Resources Department will present the Employee of the Month and special recognition awards to honor outstanding Doniana County employees. And we do have a member of our Human Resources team with us today, so take it away.
Good morning, Christina Holman with HR. I would like to take a moment to thank everyone that participated and nominated fellow employees for the September Employee of the Month awards and for the September Special Recognition Award. The following employees were nominated. We had Sandra Bali from Human Resources, Liza Burke from Purchasing, Fred Cannon from Legal, and Andres Martinez from the Information Technology Department. The following employees have been selected. Sandra Bali was selected as the Internal Customer Service Employee of the Month. She is not able to be with us this morning. So among some of the comments that led Sandra to be selected were Sandra goes above and beyond to support her departments. Sandra's performance deserves recognition based on her dedication, teamwork, and positive attitude. So congratulations, Sandra.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah, you're good. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. I would like to extend again a thank you to Sandra Bali for her support of the clerk's office for the last four-plus years. When I was appointed as clerk in 2018, we have had some significant challenges connected to our staffing. And in about 2020, when we had the pandemic and the hiring that had to happen, my first job when I started was to get our office shored up and make sure that we had the environment that could provide for our community. When I tell you that we could not have been successful without Sandra, I am not exaggerating. Her diligence, her willingness to work with our staff and understand the election code, her understanding and support of the very, very intricate processes that we are guided by, connected to election statute, protected us, connected to our hiring practices. One of the reasons that New Mexico is ranked number one in election administration by MIT, Mr. Sanchez's alma mater, is because of the best practices, and part of that is things like, at each polling location, it is required for us to have a fair representation of parties, and those are the things that Sandra followed through on, as well as we felt like she was part of our team. And with an HR department, sometimes that can be a challenge. So I appreciate her diligence, her dedication, and basically her willingness to work with our office to the point to where it has been a pleasure to work with her the last four years, and we appreciate her, as well as Erica Garay, who supported her so much. So thank you for recognizing her professionalism and attention to detail.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to call up Andres Martinez. Andres Martinez was selected as the employee special recognition. Among some of the comments that led Andres to be selected is that he goes above and beyond in assisting county employees, and he has demonstrated dedication and commitment with handling multiple projects at once, and it is always done with a smile. Thank you, Andres. Thank you again to everyone that participated. The nominations are currently being accepted for awards in October. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations, everyone, to Sandra and Andres. Moving on, we do have item number 22, which is to proclaim September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month in Doniana County. Does anyone have...
I do, thank you.
Okay, vice chair, take it away.
Es muy mi orgullo hablar de los hispanos de esta mes, este mes. So I look around this room, and I see so many wonderful faces of our Hispanic community, whether we declare ourselves Chicanos, Mexican-American, Latinos, Latinx, Puerto Ricanos, Cubanos, sea lo que sea, but we're all proudly represented here today. Nuestra comunidad multicultural nos recuerda de las diferentes culturas, perspectivas, países de origen, y es algo que nunca se nos va a olvidar. As we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize that in naming this celebration, we continue to grow, learn from each other, compartir experiencias, y abrazar nuevas ideas que nos inspiran pensamiento y reflexión. So today, we have Sonja White, Board President of the Hispanic Chamber, Amanda Morales, Vice President and Secretary, Richard Aguilar, immediately past president, John Vázquez. And thank you all for being here today, I really appreciate you, and acknowledging the importance of recognizing the Hispanic Heritage Month, which is celebrated nationwide from September 15 through October 15. We barely squeaked it by, so if you'll step forward to the podium, please, and share with us your, what you represent and what this proclamation means to you. Thank you so much for the work you do in our community, I'm so proud of you, and I'm proud to be part of you. Mil gracias.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair, and good morning, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. On behalf of the Las Cruces Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, I do want to deeply thank Doniana County and the Board of Commissioners for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month and the many contributions from our community. You did introduce our members, but I would like to just take a moment. We also have with us Miguel Acosta, he is our newest board member, and again, Richard Aguilar, our past chair, and Amanda Morales, our first vice chair. The Las Cruces Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is proud and honored to support local businesses here in Las Cruces, to celebrate our culture, and to help strengthen our economic growth within Las Cruces. This proclamation reminds us how powerful our shared heritage and collaborations truly are. So I want to thank you again, on behalf of the chamber.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to say anything?
I'm completely unprepared for this. Good morning, everyone. My name is Richard Aguilar, of course, of the Las Cruces Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, county commissioners, chair, vice chair, for this meaningful proclamation in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. On behalf of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, we are deeply honored to accept this proclamation, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month here in the Doniana County. This month is a time to celebrate the vibrant cultures, riches, rich history, and enduring contributions of Hispanic and Latino communities, not just across the nation, but right here in Doniana County, and right here in our neighborhoods. So from small business owners and educators to artists, healthcare workers, and civic leaders, Hispanic Americans have helped shape the very fabric of our region with resilience, creativity, and heart. We are proud to stand alongside Doniana County in recognizing the importance of this heritage. The chamber remains committed to empowering Hispanic entrepreneurs, advocating for equitable opportunities, and fostering a spirit of unity and collaboration across all communities. So let this proclamation serve not only as a celebration, but a call to action to continue uplifting voices, honoring traditions, and building bridges that strengthen our shared future. Thank you again to the county commissioners, community leaders, and all those who make this recognition possible. Juntos somos más fuertes. Together, we are stronger. Gracias, and may this month be filled with the pride, reflection, and inspiration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and Chair and distinguished county commissioners. My name is Miguel Acosta, and I am the newest board member with the Las Cruces Hispanic Chamber, and also work with Hutton Broadcasting in the community. On behalf of our entire organization, I am here to say a profound thank you. We are deeply honored to receive this recognition from the Doniana Commission in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. This proclamation is not just for us, but for every Hispanic entrepreneur, business owner, and professional who contributes to the vibrant economic and cultural fabric of our county. The Las Cruces Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is dedicated to fostering an environment where the businesses can thrive. Your acknowledgement of our work gives us renewed energy for that mission. Gracias.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair. Thank you, and if I may, and I forgot to add to this. So recently, I had an opportunity to speak to Los Cementeros that attended my dad's funeral. And we must not forget those people that pour cement, that build our frames, that pick our food, because they are part of the bridge that makes this community so powerful, so vibrant. And so I'd like to thank them from the bottom of my heart. Los trabajadores agrícolas, los construyistas, los cementeros, los carpinteros, los techeros, los quienes hacen las bardas de piedra, los que nos cubren nuestra cabeza con nuestros techos. We must not forget those that also do our housekeeping. They keep this community alive, and we don't recognize them enough because, for the most part, they are unseen. So mil gracias a todos. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you read that, actually, I have some really exciting news, too, and it ties in perfectly. Our very own Dr. Amanda Lopez Askin, our county clerk, won Latin and Leadership Award over the weekend, and congratulations to you for being an absolute wonderful example of fantastic leadership in our county, and I appreciate you. So congratulations on that award.
Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
Might I say a few words also?
Please do.
Thank you, Commissioner Chaparro, for sponsoring this proclamation, and, you know, I know while, you know, we're catching this at the end, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the background that this year's Hispanic Heritage Month has occurred, that while we acknowledge, I think, as Commissioner Chaparro mentioned, the workers in our community, such as her father, who recently passed, and condolences again to you and your family, Commissioner Chaparro. This is the story of so many in our community, where so many came over the border and worked to improve the next generation. These little contributions, little by little, have built us up to create and allow us to be able to become leaders in our community. We look here in Doniana County, where we have so many amazing Latino and Latina leaders, but we look all across the country, and we see our brothers and our sisters being oppressed, being attacked, and being threatened by ICE and by this federal administration, and I want to continue to bring awareness to that because we cannot continue to let this happen. I think we've been saying since the beginning of this year, this federal, this administration since the beginning of the year has continued to threaten our community. It started almost immediately, and it continues. And although they're targeting larger communities, I just want to recognize that it's all been happening, particularly in the back with this month, where we want to celebrate the heritage of what we... what we, our people, bring to our communities and to our country, that this federal, this administration is, the actions they've taken in LA, in Portland, in Chicago, and so many other cities. And so I hope that we continue to stand up, recognize what it is and how we contribute to the fabric of this nation, to our communities, and we continue to stand up for our brothers and sisters. So thank you and appreciate you letting me take a minute there to just recognize that.
No, thank you for that. Okay, Mr. Lopez, take it away.
Whereas, today, we join the nation and our state in celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th to honor and highlight the diverse cultures, histories, and contributions of the Hispanic community in our county. And whereas, Doñana County is a better place to live because of our proud multicultural heritage in agriculture, astronomy, business, creative industries, technology, science, and sports. In these fields and many others, we find Hispanic leaders who are community advocates, firefighters, entertainers, lawyers, and policymakers who elevate us all with their talent, perseverance, and contributions. And whereas, diversity within the Hispanic community is as varied as our many cultures throughout the nation. And we acknowledge that descendants from many Hispanic countries live among us and enrich our lives every day by sharing their experience, values, culture, music, and cuisine. And whereas, as we commemorate Hispanic Heritage Month, we acknowledge that our nation's strength lies in its diversity. By embracing every unique background and story, we honor their contributions and augment our own collective experience as Americans. And whereas, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, with its diverse membership that includes businesses, nonprofit organizations, individuals, and students, continue in helping Hispanic professionals reach their goals and potential. And whereas, we encourage residents to participate in our community's learning and celebration opportunities throughout the month, ranging from cultural discussions to music and tasty food. Now, therefore, the Doñana County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month, proudly proclaimed this 14th day of October 2025.
If you'll tilt that down just a little, the light reflects on the glass. You're not in the light, you're good. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, we do have to proclaim NMAACP State Conference of Branches in Doñana County. Commissioner Reynolds.
Yes, thank you. You know, it's my privilege to actually talk about the, in the National Association for the Advancement of Color People 74th Anniversary Conference that was held this weekend here in Las Cruces. People from all over the state and some from several parts of the country actually showed up and attended many of the events that they had this week. And on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, it is an honor to recognize this event. For 74 years, the National Association for the Advancement of Color People has stood as a steadfast voice for justice, equality, and unity. And when they, when they stand up, they don't stand just for people that are black, but also for people of all color. And that's why in the NMAACP, the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, means they represent all people who are disadvantaged or downtrodden or affected negatively in any way. And as Commissioner Sanchez talked about, the current leadership and White House, I don't think they really pick on a specific race to pass their laws that are affecting all people who are less advantaged. Okay? Anyway, this year's theme for the conference was the fierce urgency of now. It reminds us of Dr. King's timeless call to act boldly and compassionately in pursuit of equality. It urges each of us to confront the injustice wherever it exists and to work together toward lasting change. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, congratulations on the 74 years of a powerful impact, and may we all continue to embrace the fierce urgency of now. It was my, it was my pleasure on Saturday to attend their banquet and also to read the proclamation and present it to Dr. Bobby Green, who is the president of the Doñana County Chapter of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People. And with that, we'll read the proclamation or have other comments. Thank you.
Commissioners, anything? Do we have anyone here today to receive the proclamation?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I delivered the proclamation to Dr. Green on Saturday at the banquet.
Perfect.
And also read it for the conference at that time. But I still think it's necessary to read it again here and have any other comments from the board.
Of course. Anyone, Commissioners? Seeing none? Mr. Lopez, please, take it away.
Whereas, the New Mexico NMAACP State Conference of Branches is celebrating its 74th anniversary. And whereas, commemoration of the 74th Annual New Mexico NMAACP State Conference was held in Las Cruces this year. And whereas, the Doñana County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the work of the NMAACP at the national, state, and local levels. And whereas, the theme for this year's conference was the fierce urgency of now, which highlights the need for change that requires immediate attention. And whereas, the fierce urgency of now calls for leaders and citizens from all walks of life to work together to eliminate inequality, injustice, and discord. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Doñana County Board of Commissioners welcomes the delegates of the New Mexico NMAACP State Conference to Doñana County as we celebrate the milestones and the accomplishment of the NMAACP, and be it further resolved that the Doñana County Board of Commissioners proudly commemorates the 74th Annual New Mexico NMAACP State Conference and recognizes the fierce urgency of now as a time for all citizens to work in solidarity towards liberty and justice for all. Proudly proclaimed this 14th day of October 2025.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, that is the end of our proclamation. Poreo, yes, Commissioner Reynolds?
I actually have a picture of the presentation of the proclamation that I will be providing for the board.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next up, we do have our public input portion of our meeting. If you would like to give generalized public input to the County Commission, if you'll please make your way forward. If you are wanting to make public comment for anything future in the meeting, if you will please wait until that item comes up. When you are done addressing the commission, you will have three minutes. There is a white binder to your left-hand side. If you will please sign that binder and also state your name for the record. Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Brandy, you good? Okay.
Commissioners, I'm Lynn Moore. September 19, 2025 is a day of infamy for Doñana County. The commission meeting started ignominiously when standing citizens were threatened with arrest if they tried to stay in the main chamber to provide public comment rather than being relegated to an overflow room. When the meeting paused, security personnel became mafioso goons. A security guard menaced me for about 10 minutes and blocked my movement across the room to talk to Vice Chair Chaparro. He was clearly trying to incite physical confrontation. He hemmed me in with a sentence of four security personnel moving closer and closer to me while barking, "Don't touch me, don't touch me." When I explained I intended to talk to Vice Chair Chaparro, he spouted insults like, "You're nothing, you don't matter." The video shows when the meeting paused, Vice Chair Chaparro told this man she was not concerned for her safety, yet he blocked movement of citizens to try to stoke physical confrontation. Whoever directed this behavior should be fired. Several citizens then distracted him and moved their chairs so I could get through and talk to Vice Chair Chaparro briefly. The meeting reflected excess profound disrespect for the public and cowardice that attendees were required to go through metal detectors showed the county was happy to create a war zone. Since metal detectors had apparently already cleared out any weapons, an outsized number of security personnel were inside the chamber. It says a lot about those who thought this was a good way to show their disdain for fully legal free speech and to try to exert total control. Instead of menacing and intimidating citizens, many of us expected focus on essential features about Project Jupiter, like finalizing and publicly distributing agreements rather than belatedly sending out drafts with missing sections. No competent attorney would do that. Doing your due diligence, learning how underfunded the New Mexico Environment Department is in its failures to carry out inspections and oversight regarding air quality, water quality, and water discharges. Learning the folly of saying the department will protect residents from environmental harm and health problems by vigorously holding the developers accountable. That doesn't happen. When they enforce, it's too little, too late. Plus, their oversight will be even more muted because the governor promotes Project Jupiter. I found it inexplicable that except for Vice Chair Chaparro, none of you showed any interest in requiring documented facts or taking a firm line with the developers. Instead, you've been promoters for them. Please get third-party expert help. With respect, most of you seem to be in way over your heads. With lightning speed, four of you just rolled over. You're allowing irreversible damage to the people and resources of this county if you finalize any industrial revenue bonds for Project Jupiter, especially if you do so without an environmental assessment, a power generation plan, full disclosure of total water usage, and a written agreement among the county, Project Jupiter, and El Paso Electric that rate payers will not ever be impacted by microged costs.
Thank you.
It says six right over there.
Oh.
Yeah.
I apologize. If you can.
You.
Oh, six over. If you can, please sign the book on your way. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I promise, my name is Steve Montanias, and I promise I'm not changing careers because nobody would ever trust me with heavy machinery or an industrial vehicle, or they might with a jackhammer. I know it's a little uncouth to be wearing a hat in front of a room full of dignitaries, but I hope you'll make a small exception. I am here to promote Build My Future, which is happening this Friday at NMSU over in Lot 30, which is more commonly known as the tailgate parking lot. Build My Future is, I want to say we're on our sixth or seventh, if I'm correct, as it's been around. It was an idea from our executive director, Nicole, at the time. And has really, you know, it started in the Rossen Builders' Park parking lot, and it has evolved and it has grown to, you know, we've had to use Field of Dreams, and now Lot 30, if you've ever seen it, it's huge. The Las Cruces Public Schools, you know, our charter schools, and lots of trade organizations have really been involved in this, in this event. I had my intern here, and she got to see the logistics of a county commission meeting. Unfortunately, she had to, she had to leave. But these students, you know, for those of you know, I like to mentor students of the ACE program, and I always say that we learn more from them than they learn from us. You know, the talk about, you know, the talk about kids these days, I'm here to tell you, these kids, these kids are amazing. They're so respectful. I hear so much, "Yes, sir," "no, sir," and they want to learn. And they really want to learn about the possibilities, the career possibilities outside of a four-year, you know, college curriculum. And, you know, we're here to really just kind of show what the options are. We're really proud that, we're really happy that NMSU was, was willing to partner up on this and lend us their lot. So again, October 17th, all of you, all of you are invited. So you can just stay far away from each other to avoid quorum. We'll be starting, there's a morning session at 9:30 to 12:30. There'll be afternoon session from 1 to 3. So you're more than welcome to attend. They're going to be kids from every public school and charter school that's there to, you know, really, really there to see and just kind of, you know, just kind of explore, explore their options once the high school's over. We've seen kids who are now journeymen, who are now, who are now installing insulation. They're, and the funny thing is, they are just eager for that nail gun, let me tell you, as soon as they, as soon as they see it. But we'd really love to see as many of you there participate. And any vendors or any, you know, anybody who really wants to, an opportunity to reach out and, and just kind of showcase any construction opportunities, you're more than welcome to attend. And I'm going to leave these with, leave these with you. Thank you all very much.
Good morning, Commission. My name is Paul Pompeo. I've stood before you several times in the past, but today I'm standing before you as a citizen of Doñana County and a taxpayer. Last month, the staff of the Doñana County Flood Commission received an important letter stating in part that the joint powers agreement between Doñana County and the Flood Commission would terminate 30 days on October 13, 2025. Recent developments have moved this date into the future per the Albuquerque Journal article yesterday. However, several issues raised this potential termination still remain. I could speak for an hour of my personal interaction with the Flood Commission, starting in 1991. I will omit my comments to a general overview. Daily responsibilities of this department include management and implementation of numerous federal and state grants, compliance with the Code of Federal Regulations Title 44 Emergency Management and Assistance Parts 55 to 58 National Flood Insurance Program, assisting county residents with floodplain determination on their properties, review and approval of clomore and lowmore applications, and lastly, 28 dams in Doñana County that fall under the Flood Commission for operation, inspection, and maintenance. The question here is, if this JPA is terminated, who picks up these responsibilities? These are serious matters that impact residents of Doñana County on a daily basis. They cannot be explained away by simply stating that somebody in the county will fill those roles. We, the taxpayers of Doñana County, deserve clear, transparent, complete, and detailed answers. One of the most egregious elements to this situation is the need by the county to terminate the JPA in only 30 days. I ask you why. Usually, this type of rash decision in short timeline is based on an immediate public need such as fraud, malfeasance, or incompetence. As none of these elements exist in the Flood Commission office, the answer still remains: why? I would like to draw parallels to the ongoing situation with Doñana County and the El Comunal Real Utility Authority. This situation continues to be challenging with the county residents in the greater Sunland Park area to secure reliable and safe drinking water. This is a very serious situation, but yet Doñana County gave themselves over two years to get out of this agreement. So again, the question remains, what is the overarching public concern that necessitated a 30-day JPA termination with the Flood Commission? In concluding my comments, I would like to wrap up by addressing you, Honorable Vice Chair, Commissioner Chaparro. To say that we have known each other for decades would be an understatement. In the past, you have spoken proudly and passionately about the staff of Doñana County. In the unaddressed formal letter delivered to the Commission on, Flood Commission on the 12th of September, reads well your desire to successfully work as a Flood Commissioner to develop a new bond or GPA. And I'll just paraphrase, should the negotiations fail, the county supports under JPA, including the positions under the Flood Office, will also conclude at that time. How can this be? How does the management of Doñana County treat the staff of one of the most well-run, efficient departments like this? Commissioner Chaparro, I request that you and your leadership and the Board of Commissioners make this clear that this will not be tolerated in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your service. Real quick, regarding Project Jupiter, I'm very concerned that there was focus, not enough focus on the, on the power plant that was, that is going to be built. This plant, from my understanding, is going to be about an 800-megawatt power plant, which is twice the size of the Rio Grande Power Plant, of El Paso Electric's Rio Grande Power Plant. It'll use twice as much natural gas. It equate, they're going to use a It equate, they're going to use about 56 million BTUs per hour at this plant. That comes out that they're going to pay about $400,000 per day for their natural gas. Are we going to get any grocery receipts tax from any of that? From my understanding, generating plants don't, they pay grocery receipt tax only when they sell the electricity to the consumer. Since they're not selling it to anybody except themselves, will they pay any grocery receipts tax at all in that $400 million per day? I kind of guess that that would amount, if they did have to pay it when they consume it, it would be about $10 million a year of grocery receipts tax. That's my understanding, but I, there's no, nothing in the Q and A, nothing addresses this. That's my biggest problem with Project Jupiter, is it's a huge heat generator. It's going to burn massive amounts of gas, and nothing is going to be produced except heat from that plant. So, I mean, I could go on and on, but I think you get the gist. We just need understanding, I just want to make sure the county gets the taxes that they would get, because if they sold this, if they sold that electricity, we would get taxed from it. That's all.
Excuse me, sir, what's your name?
My name is Ken Miller.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. So, I sound like a broken record here, but I will continue to advocate for my community and the surrounding areas. We have done and worked with the water for three and a half years to accomplish clean, safe drinking water in the Sunland Park-Santa Teresa area. And, you know, there's been numerous cities and communities that have experienced water shortages due to data centers, to name a few. Arizona, Mesa, Arizona, Goodyear, Arizona, Phoenix, Arizona, Georgia, Newtown County, Texas, Abilene, and Corpus Christi, Virginia, Loudon County, Iowa, Atuna, South Carolina, Goosegeek, Reno, Nevada, Herminton, Oregon, Dallas, Oregon, Denver, Colorado. So, this is proof that the water will be droughted in this area as well, even though they're using the closed-loop system, because there really hasn't been a data center that has used a closed-loop system. So we don't have proof that it is going to change the water. Their daily water consumption will be 20,000, cap 60, which I think it's going to be 60. I don't think the 20 will be enough. So, a lot of, there's been a lot of missing information everywhere in all the contracts, the documents. I don't know how you all are letting this slide. Like, I would expect a complete contract or a complete, you know, paperwork to go through with my decision. And then I hope that, you know, the brackish water study will be done first, because the El Paso desalination plant only has 20% to 30% success. So what will be done differently here in Santa Teresa for a higher success rate? Santa Teresa does not only have sufficient water to support Project Jupiter, and will not only compromise water in Santa Teresa, but Sanlán, Ciudad Juárez, El Paso, and eventually Las Cruces. So we will have water droughts. So how are we going to come back from this? This is an irreversible damage. We cannot get our water back. It will be gone. No matter how many billions of dollars are being pumped into the economy, not to mention our health from the toxins that are going to affect us and are going to be released, which doesn't matter, right? Because none of you live in that area. And once again, if this was such a great project...
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry, ma'am, what is your name? Ma'am, you didn't state your name.
Yes, I did.
You did? I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you, ma'am. My bad ears, I apologize.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Zach Libin. I'm a local engineer and the vice chair of the New Mexico Watershed and Dam owners Coalition. I just have a few short comments to offer that I think that the B.O.C.C. should carefully consider breaking ties with the Flood Commission. I think that the Flood Commission offers a lot of value to the county. I'd just like to offer that the Flood Commission is an important part of the good work that the county is doing for the public.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Honorable Vice Chair, and Commission members. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. My name is Chris Naidoo. I'm actually also a drainage and flood control engineer, and just wanted to briefly comment on the joint powers discussion that is going on. I would actually like to tell a story. It's the story of the community of Donaana County. My affiliation with the Flood Commission started in 2014, and one of the very first projects that I was involved with was the Donaana Master Plan for the Donaana area. And I think one of the most challenging parts of that study was just being part of the public meeting and sitting face-to-face with the residents that were encountering a lot of flooding issues, a lot of property damage, and feeling very helpless, you know, because we have these studies and they show all these numbers, and at the end of the day, there's real people that's involved, you know, in these communities. And just watching the progress that the Flood Commission has made in the last 10 years, the planning cycle that's involved, the risk analysis that's involved, the technical direction that's required, and most importantly, the leadership that is necessary to drive these projects from planning to obtaining funding, and then finally through construction. I smile every time I drive to Las Cruces, because I drive, one, I'm excited about chachis and being able to eat tacos over there. And secondly, I look at projects like the Elks Road Channel, the Abeta Pond, that was just completed this year, and the difference that it's going to make to those folks that live at the end of Walker Lane. Going back to 2015, to that public meeting, looking at the desperation in the lives of those, in the faces of those people, and just the work that the Flood Commission has done. You know, I know there is a lot of process and a lot of work that has to go in to sort, you know, all these issues out. But at the end of the day, you know, we have people that are protected because of the good work that the Flood Commission does, and property and lives are things that are very important, and I see that there's a lot of passion here in terms of public safety. Vice Chair Chaparro and Commissioner Reynolds, you know, with the public safety, it's very great to see that you guys have a passion for public safety. And having worked with the folks at the Flood Commission for the last 10 years, I can, I can speak to the effort and the work that they put into place to make sure that the people of Donaana County are protected. So, thank you very much for your time this morning.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez, Vice Chair Chaparro. Pardon me. My name is Aaron Casillas, Executive Director of Mycelia Foundation. We are a local nonprofit based here in Las Cruces, dedicated to bridging the digital divide in our community in many different aspects. I am also the Microsoft Tech Spark Fellow, representing New Mexico on a national level, but my comments here are of a personal nature. I first want to commend you all for the way you handled the previous, the last county meeting. It was very contentious, and I thought it was handled very well. I was in the audience, and I think I'm still traumatized by everything that happened. I just have a very brief comment that I'd like to express, that every major scientific body agrees we face an urgent climate crisis, and really, there are only two ways forward. One is for Americans to consume less, which I don't think is going to happen, or we need to innovate our way out of this, or a combination of both. While I am not an expert in hyperscale data centers, I do understand that projects like Jupiter represent the innovative infrastructure we desperately need. Solving climate change requires massive computing power for AI-driven climate solutions, advancing modeling and breakthrough technologies that don't exist yet. Regarding economic impact, based on my research and a recently published white paper at the Mycelia Foundation website, I believe the economic development projections for this project may actually be conservative. For these reasons, and there are many more, but I don't want to take too much time, I urge you to continue to support of Project Jupiter.
Travis Brown, Executive Director, Southern New Mexico State Fair and Rodeo. And we're, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just here to let you know, we had another fantastic event this year, and that was largely due to the support provided by so many of the county organizations, from the clerk's office to the sheriff's office, emergency management, fire and rescue, from the facilities department, the work that they've done throughout the year to make improvements on the fairground, which not only benefit us, but also benefit many of the other groups and organizations that use the ground. And just from the amount of time I spend out there, I can tell you the grounds are being used more frequently, more organizations are evaluating them and looking at them as a potential. So, we had a fantastic event. We are very pleased with how the entire event went. You know, just a few of the things that I would like to share with you. We provided over $7,500 in donations to local nonprofits who come out and help volunteer to put on our event, and most of those are youth organizations. A lot of them are high school groups that we provided donation back to them for their volunteerism to help them accomplish their goals. Over $20,000 in scholarships to seniors within the region. We incorporate 11 counties that are eligible to participate during our event, and so any senior who had participated in the livestock portion of our fair over, in the past, was eligible, and so we've awarded over $20,000 in scholarships, over $700,000 in premiums and sale proceeds to youth in the region, and as well as over 2,000 school-aged children who were allowed free admission to enjoy the fair activities, over 1,500 students who participated in agricultural education presentations, to include Career Day on Friday for 8th through 12th grade students, over 100 vendors who are all small business owners, many of those from Donaana County, who were able to come out, participate, and promote and their business. So, I, the cooperation that we've experienced the last several years has been tremendous. It continues to grow, and I think that is a direct reflection on the leadership of the county, from Mr. Andrews to assistant managers. Mr. Lopez came out and spoke at our grand opening, which we appreciate, and that trickles down again to every single facility's leadership, the leadership at the, all of the organizations we deal with. Mr. Martinez, Andres Martinez, was recognized earlier. He was out there after hours checking on internet connectivity. So we just thank you for all your support.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. If you'll approach the podium, please, and state your name. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Derek Pacheco, for the record. I love data. My favorite data point today so far is there was only one person out of eight up here at the dice paying attention to the people speaking in front of them. That was the vice chair here. Everyone else was on their cell phone or looking into space or paying attention to the security guard that was hassling me. Over the past several months, the public has been presented with selective information that does not align with the official record. From zoning discrepancies to non-compliant environmental studies to conflicting testimony, it has become clear that transparency is being replaced by confusion. First, the zoning track associated with Project Jupiter does not match the footprint shown in the developer's early public renderings. Those changes were never publicly clarified, even though the difference directly affects environmental review, infrastructure, and surrounding land use. Second, the environmental impact study presented to the county is not compliant with state standards. This was acknowledged on record during last week's planning and zoning meeting. Despite this, the developer testified that all environmental obligations had been satisfied, a statement that directly contradicts materials obtained through public records requests, which show the report was prepared by a contractor not on the approved state list and fails to meet required thresholds before any related approvals can proceed. Now, we face an inconsistency that directly ties to the resolution before you today. The Project Jupiter development team stated under oath that they would not be exploring or utilizing brackish water or desalinization. That testimony is on the public record. Yet today, many of the same developers and their supporters are present to advocate for a $25 million desal plant, one that would extract and process brackish water from the same deep aquifer that lies beneath the Project Jupiter site. If these two efforts are unrelated, then the question must be asked, why are the same parties so deeply invested in supporting this desal initiative? The overlap of interests strongly suggests a connection that has not been fully disclosed to the public or to this commission. When sworn testimony conflicts with subsequent actions, it casts doubt on the integrity of the entire process. For that reason, I urge the commission to table the desalinization resolution before us today until these discrepancies are investigated and resolved. Specifically, the relationship between Project Jupiter and the proposed desal facility is clarified in writing, a compliant independent environmental impact study submitted, and three, all statements made under oath are reviewed for accuracy and consistency. The public deserves truth and transparency before millions of dollars are committed to a project that could fundamentally alter our region's water future. Please table this resolution until those conditions are met.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Next, please. If you'll state your name for the record.
Good morning, everybody, Commissioners, Chair, that he's not here, but my name is Carolina Valois, and I'm advocating also for my community. And on the last meeting that we had, I took, and I have this in my mind, that only some of the Commissioners just use their personal things. I like the jobs, there are going to be jobs for their, for their people, there are going to be jobs for their children, but guess what? They are going to have jobs, but we're not going to have the main thing, that it's water. And then, you might, there's a lot of billions of dollars invested. Unfortunately, there's not going to be any water. Even though you said that your kids are going to stay here, that they're going to work for this company or whatever, they have the degrees, they have everything, well, that's your, that was your personal, personal statement. You never said about that community. You never said how much things you're going to do to your community. You didn't care about your community. You did cry for a person that had cancer, right, Mrs. Cametos? Well, you know what? Let me tell you this, there's not going to be enough tears when this project stays there, because people are going to have so many sickness in their, their health is going to be very complicated. The noise, the water. What if, the words "what if" do not exist. Como hicimos en español. El hubiera, no existe. Porque el hubiera, se va. So I hope that you really take some consideration and not just use your personal things. Talk about the community, not your personal issues with your kids if they have to leave from here because they don't, can't find any jobs. That's not, that's not right. You should have said community members, not your personal things. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to commission input. Any members of the commission that has public input or commission input today? Seeing none, we'll move on to county elected official input? You don't want to talk about elections going on down the hall? No? Okay.
I want to speak in a staff of commissioners.
Okay. Right, so we have a couple of brief updates. We're going to have an update from our team Toastmasters. If you're here, come on up. All right. So while they're making their way, oh, you have, okay. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
Paulies, I'm using this portion for staff input. Give me a few minutes. Hello, everyone. The reason I'm facing you all is because I would like to give, I would like to take the opportunity to acknowledge something very cool that our office has done for the last three years, and during this portion of staff input, award a certificate to my staff, and particularly, a young person who participated in what I think is hopefully becoming a tradition. And let me just give you a little bit of background, if I may. By the way, Amanda Lopez Askin, Dona Anna County Clerk. We're recognizing our winners of an annual sticker contest. So, what our office has done, and what our team has done, is to continue to try to engage young people in democracy in any way that we can. And if you have not followed any of our socials, including our podcast, our YouTube, any of the interviews that we have on any of our socials, and we are in all of them, including TikTok, et cetera, because when I'm asked, how do we engage and improve participation? I always say, "in all the ways." And so, that is the way that young people are tuning in, and so, we must listen to them when they do that. So, part of it is even the younger folks, as well as our team. So, again, this is an annual sticker contest. This is the third year we've had it, and this is the first year we held the Future Voter Sticker Design Contest. This year, we asked county employees to submit their designs, and then those designs were voted on by all county employees who wanted to vote. So, thank you for those who did participate in that particular vote. The winner this year was Jaclyn, not surprised, otherwise known as Jackie Duran, from our office, who also won the first year of this contest. So, that is Jackie. She is our voter registration lead, Sonything Voter Registration. She's at the helm of and does amazing work, and we appreciate her so much. So, we were also asked a local school to help us create a Future Voter sticker, and the winner of this is Emma Luna Rodriguez, the daughter of our former treasurer, Eric Rodriguez, and our current Chief Deputy Treasurer. So, she's a fifth grader at Raíces del Saber, and thank you to all that participated. What we again hope is this becomes something that is an annual event, and we continue to get more and more participants. And so, to Chair Sheldon Hernandez's point, one point that I would like to make every single meeting is every November, like clockwork, we have an election in New Mexico. Historically, prior to 2019, that has not been the case. That is means, if you were an eligible voter, you have a ballot waiting for you currently down the hall, so feel free to head over there when you are finished with this meeting, and you will vote on things like bond issues, school boards, city councils, depending on where you live. So, and if you're not registered to vote, New Mexico does have same-day voter registration, and you're welcome to take advantage of that. So, without further ado, I would like to congratulate our winners, but also offer them a certificate of recognition for their participation and support of democracy in Dona Anna County.
[applause]
You go vote.
Yes.
But you get one if you go vote. Go vote, and you get to see the stickers. Nice.
Yeah. Sure. Do you want to come up here? Yeah. Yes, if you don't mind. Sorry, y'all.
No, I love it!
Congratulations! Thank you. [applause]
Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Thank you. Next up, we have our Toastmasters group.
Good morning, everyone. So, my name is Chad Reed. I am with Toastmasters International. For those of you that don't know what Toastmasters is, we build better public speakers and leaders, and we are privileged to be here today to recognize the founding of Donna Anna County Toastmasters. So, these are your employees who serve the county, and we're hoping to build them into better speakers, better leaders, and better communicators, so that they can continue to serve this community and make the citizens proud. So, thank you for allowing us to be here today on behalf of Toastmasters, and we look forward to building a better relationship with the county into the future. Anyone else have any comments? Please.
Hello, Commissioners. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, community watching from YouTube or wherever you are in digital land. I want to address the community because I am the elected club president for our new Toastmasters Club. We do have a name. It is DAC Voices of Dona Anna County. And if you would like to find out more information, please go on toastmasters.org. You can find the club by searching for zip code city. This is one of three Toastmasters Clubs available in the local area in Las Cruces. We do meet every Thursday here at the Government Center. We're trying to get a regular schedule. There is contact information, so if you have any questions, you know, feel free to reach out to the club. And just as was said, we are, excuse me? Oh, another club officer. Yes, so we are definitely partaking in this road of learning how to better communicate, speak publicly. There are tips or tricks or pathways, there's education, but the final end result is to find confidence in your own voice. And I hope that through us learning this, we can also guide future members, future DAC employees, future community members, and also welcome you to our doors. So that way, we can find a safe space where we can learn to communicate, talk about different issues, and even just help each other see the same side or different sides of different issues. We're just trying to bring everybody together. So, I want to thank County Manager Scott Andrews for giving us this opportunity, and that's all I've got at the moment. Anybody else? Should we have a word of the week? No? No, any questions about Toastmasters and its format? Please check it out online. There are also YouTube videos as well. It's going great so far.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might say just something, I appreciate this is awesome to see that we have our own local chapter of Toastmasters. So, thank you, County Manager, for bringing this, inspiring this, and thank you to you all for participating. I think one of the things that I see, because we, unbeknownst to many people, us five Commissioners have a life outside of the Commission, and so, having an opportunity to practice, learn tricks of the trade, to be able to present, learn how to be able to be more effective as in presenters and speaking and so on, is a skill that will help you throughout your career. And for those of us that might not want to be in the public eye or not as comfortable, it's an opportunity to be able to practice that. And so, I hope, I know I've seen some of you all present already to the B O C C in the past, and so, I hope that we'll see more of you in the future giving some updates to us, but I want to say thank you all for participating. I hope to see other employees doing it, and just coming from my experience, while not participating in Toastmasters, I do know many people that have, that have given me tips on, throughout my career, and so, I know this is something worthwhile, and again, thank you all for participating.
Yeah, we can take a picture. Yes.
I'd like to make a comment as well.
Sure, while we line up for a picture.
You know, every survey I've ever, I've ever looked at, it talked about the most feared thing in anybody's life is public speaking. And so, this is really a way, I mean, it's just something that really needs to be done by everyone. I can't think of, even here, it looks like we don't, we're not afraid of public speaking, and we don't feel like we're ridiculed for the way we speak, but we certainly are, and we are nervous when we come up here as well. So, this is a great step for you all to take forward to become more comfortable with public speaking anyway.
Yep.
And I congratulate you.
And that's D A C Voices? Okay. Because it autocorrected it to Dark Voices, and I thought that was the coolest thing. Yes. Wrong, Chris.
I got that part. If I could have a couple of, maybe Carrie on this side, maybe? Right in front of Ernie, perfect. And then, if we could move that nameplate behind the, there you go, perfect. Yes, you've got a hair right here. Thank you.
Next up, we have Amanda Bowen for a brief update. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. I do have a quick presentation loaded. Hopefully, our IT team will be bringing that up shortly. I'll get going. I just want to give you a quick update on the situation in Vado, Barino, Del Cerro, Rincon flooding, just so that you have an awareness of what's still moving. I know I send you occasional emails here and there, but just wanted to put this all in one place so you can have that information. Real quick, just to recap, not that you've forgotten, but just in case you forgot the timeline of things. June 30th, we had some flooding in Rincon. July 22nd and 23rd, flooding in Vado, Del Cerro, and Barino area. July 24th, you as a board declared a state of emergency. July 25th, the state declared a state of emergency. August 16th, FEMA declared 4886. It was a previously declared disaster, and they expanded that to include Dona Anna County. And by August 22nd, Dona Anna County had the FEMA Disaster Recovery Center open. That was accepting intakes from our residents for FEMA assistance. Your assistance that you've provided to our residents, we've distributed approximately $200,000 to about 80 families through the help of United Way and the Community Foundation of Southern New Mexico. The individual assistance, IA as we refer to it, from FEMA, the disaster recovery center there has seen 466 cumulative visitors at the center. 258 of those were first-time visitors, 208 repeat visitors, and 174 registration intakes. Really, what that means to you is that FEMA individual assistance has been given to residents to the tune of about $2.3 million. Of that is broken out. You can see there 195 with the individual housing, individuals in housing program eligible, so the average person is receiving about $12,000 in that kind of funding. This is a team that's been working really hard down there. These people have been there since August 22nd. They're a team of people from Puerto Rico that are Spanish speakers that are here to serve the community. I had the benefit of being able to spend some time there on Friday with them, and the stories that are coming out of the recovery center there as they help our citizens are really amazing. It's been awesome to hear both sides, our residents as well as the FEMA team, who seems to feel equally as rewarded. But they've done in-person meetings with people to help them resolve any kind of pending individual assistance that's available. Also in the photo in blue is the Small Business Administration. I'll talk a bit about them here in just a second. We do have our team of experts on board that's helping us to manage the individual assistance process, to help our residents as they work through recovering from disaster. Additionally, we've got the disaster case management underway. We did receive a one-year grant from UMCOR, which is United Methodist Relief Committee on Relief, and they've provided us an amazing grant to be able to continue the disaster casework. We're training our team members to ensure that they have the highest level of competency in being able to work with residents long-term. Additionally, we're seeking a database in order to assist residents better, make sure we track cases, and nobody gets missed in the process. We've also asked for some additional assistance from the state in order to maintain a case ratio that is manageable for our personnel. We've also started a long-term recovery group, also known as LTRG. That's the lingo we like to use. Essentially, what that is, is that helps to fill any unmet need from a resident. If we are, we know of an unmet need, that committee comes together in order to try to fill that. That can be fundraising, that can be finding dirt for property, that can be finding furniture for families, finding housing for families, assisting with construction, what have you. We have an overwhelming number of agencies who have been involved in that. It's an offshoot of COAD, so COAD is Blue Skies Day. Long-term Recovery Group is the disaster version of that. Lots of new groups coming to the table. We're really excited about being able to have a full team that will help in ways that we, as a government, may not be able to. Additionally, our disaster housing remains our biggest concern at this time. Moving on to public assistance, things that are under the government dime, the recovery scoping is underway. We've started weekly meetings with FEMA in order to work through our disaster inventory. Again, we have a team of specialists working with us. They are knowledgeable on the most recent processes, so feel really confident moving forward with that. Our public inventory inspections are from FEMA are expected to happen at the end of October, early November, and right now, our estimated damages for the county are upwards of $9 million. We're not done calculating yet. Those are the ones that we have fully detailed, still working on that, but I expect that number to go up just a little bit. Our next steps, individual assistance side, FEMA intake process is ending. They only keep that open for a short period of time. That will end tomorrow, October 15th. We've done a plethora of messages via all the platforms, assistance from the county PIO team to do TikToks and Facebook messaging. We've tried to communicate to the community that, but if you know of anyone who needs to do an intake, they really need to do it today or tomorrow before that center closes. We will have disaster case managers that will help with the appeal process, so if someone has already done an intake and they're in the works, they're good to go. We can still work with them. If they don't do an intake, they will lose out on any ability to receive FEMA assistance. So, that's really what I want to impress upon you today, that if you know anybody that's still out there, they should really get in. SBA, the Small Business Administration, will be on-site until October 30th. Why is that important? We don't have a lot of small businesses in the area. They can give very low-interest loans to individuals as well. So, if FEMA assistance was not available, but impacted people need some further financial assistance, they can go talk to the Small Business Administration until the end of this month. They can seek assistance in that manner. We also have pending requests with FEMA for direct housing. We've been waiting for that for weeks, still don't have an answer there, but we are seeking alternate funding through the state, so that may be on your agenda upcoming if we are able to find some funding there. Additionally, we'll be continuing our disaster case management supported through the long-term recovery group. On the public assistance side, that's a long-term process. We will continue working with FEMA through that process in order to recoup as much of the FEMA funds as possible. We've done a plethora of messages via all the platforms, assistance from the county PIO team to do TikToks and Facebook messaging. We've tried to communicate to the community that, but if you know of anyone who needs to do an intake, they really need to do it today or tomorrow before that center closes. We will have disaster case managers that will help with the appeal process. So if someone has already done an intake and they're in the works, they're good to go. We can still work with them. If they don't do an intake, they will lose out on any ability to receive FEMA assistance. So that's really what I want to impress upon you today, that if you know anybody that's still out there, they should really get in. SBA, the Small Business Administration, will be onsite until October 30th. Why is that important? We don't have a lot of small businesses in the area. They can give very low interest loans to individuals as well. So if FEMA assistance was not available, but impacted people need some further financial assistance, they can go talk to the Small Business Administration until the end of this month. They can seek assistance in that manner. We also have pending requests with FEMA for direct housing. We've been waiting for that for weeks. Still don't have an answer there, but we are seeking alternate funding through the state. So that may be on your agenda upcoming if we are able to find some funding there. Additionally, we'll be continuing our disaster case management supported through the Long-Term Recovery Group. On the public assistance side, that's a long-term process. We will continue working with FEMA through that process in order to recoup as much of the FEMA funds as possible. Stand for questions if there are any. Otherwise, I just wanted to make sure you're well aware of what's happening.
Can you go back one slide? What's public infrastructure inspections? Is that just like roadways, bridges?
Yes, sir. Any public infrastructure is going to be for us and what's on our damage inventory. Flood infrastructure, our roads, we had some utility facility that needed repairs. So they'll go out and do inspections on each of those public infrastructures that are pending and FEMA will evaluate them for their criteria before they give us any kind of funding to reimburse for repairs.
Okay. I drove by Vado the other day from the highway and I saw where that was all graded, where it breached the highway and it's all graded out. It looked great guys, so thank you for that. I have no questions. Commissioners, anything else? You good? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Amanda, this is, I am really excited about the way both the county and the community responded during this event. I mean, the road was washed out on stern. You couldn't even get into Vado, you know, the normal way. You had to go the back road, go back through Mesquite and down that way. I mean, there were signs. I'm not, I was, I actually went onsite as well and tried to help as much as I could, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not looking for credit. I'm just looking for the fact that I was there to see what was going on and there were so many people. It was, it was a fantastic effort to help the community and I hope that we get everything done right. I'm also proud with the way the board supported the needs of the community immediately by passing a resolution that would actually fund most of the problems that they had within the first 48 hours. And I think that was the right thing to do and I think we should continue to use that as an example going forward to make sure that we're Johnny on the spot when these kinds of things happen. So thank you, you, the OEM, the team here at the county and all the citizens and community efforts that made this thing successful as possible.
Thank you.
And to just echo that too, the timeline that you gave us right away, the first slide, is incredible. I mean, we've not seen that kind of response from FEMA, from the state. So thank you to you and your team and your all's leadership, because that's a first for this county to see that kind of response, getting it done, getting money out there was great. So I hope, well, I hope this never happens again, but if it does, I hope that this is what we see each and every time, is this template of how we got the help out and the needs met of the community. So thank you. Thank you for you and your team.
I really think that my team has been successful. Our county departments have been successful in large part because we've received the support of the board and county administration in moving forward things like plans and being able to fund things that move us faster. We have received as a county lots of kudos from FEMA and how quickly we've responded and how quickly we've moved forward. That's a direct reflection, not of me, but of a lot of collective work. So thank you all for your support and what you do to help us be successful.
There's one more thing I forgot to mention and that is that the amount of dirt that was brought in there. You couldn't walk from the road or you can barely walk on the road, but you couldn't get the road to any of the houses without stepping in at least almost ankle-deep or better mud. And it took, there were like semi-trucks going constantly, running for, I think, days, actually taking tractor truck, truck, tractor trailer truck loads of sediment in there in order to just to make it possible to get to and from, getting into houses and getting into homes, repair driveways, just so people could actually get into their homes. It was, it was amazing to see.
Okay, thank you. No wonder why you're the Emergency Manager of the Year. Congratulations again, but thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, thank you ma'am.
One more brief update, just in response to some of the comments today.
Perfect, thank you.
Carrie Neal, County Attorney. I did want to respond to some of the comments about the JPA with flood. So that joint powers agreement was originally drafted and negotiated in the 90s and it has not been updated since then. So JPAs such as that should be revisited and renegotiated every few years, which is the number one purpose of stating that we wanted to renegotiate that JPA. So as part of that, someone, someone brought up the CRUA dissolution versus the flood JPA and the differences. That was contractually controlled in both of those instances. So when we, when we, when the vote was taken to dissolve CRUA, the timeline was based on that JPA that was with CRUA. Same stands for the JPA with flood. The timeline was based on that JPA that had been established previously. To let you all know, I have met with the flood commissioner and we have verbally agreed that so long as we are both meeting and continuing to negotiate in good faith, that that 30-day timeline will be extended to give us time to work out the new agreement, because we do realize that there are a lot of things, that a lot of very intricate details and we have to figure out what this relationship is going to look like going forward in the best interest of the county, in the best interest of the flood commission, in the best interest of our people. Thank you.
Thank you for that update.
Yes. I'd like to jump on the back of that to say that, you know, these discussions we're having with the flood commission are not about us divorcing each other. It's about us developing a more amicable relationship. And there's no, we have no intention of throwing them to the curb and not taking advantage of their knowledge, skills and experience. We just, the JPA that we had was terrible at best. And now we're trying to work out a more amicable relationship so that we can both benefit. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you ma'am. Okay, moving on to Commission-appointed Board Report backs. Anything?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had our MERVDA board meeting last week. We have one every couple of months. And I'm, it's sad to say that we're really struggling there. It's, it's been, I've been on the boards for seven years and I don't think we've been able to achieve more than 70, 75% fully staffed in that organization. And now we're down in the 60s, okay? This, this organization, we've raised the salaries, we've made, we've separated the staff requirements from, you know, taking calls to actually dispatch. We've done about everything that we can other than paying them another $20 or $30 an hour to actually recruit the people we need. And I want to, I want to reach out to the community and say, listen, if you have any thought of even possibly thinking that you might be able to work at MERVDA, you should look on their website and make an application. It takes about six, four to six months to get somebody trained even to do the job. But it's, it's absolutely the heartbeat of this community. When MERVDA struggles and we have trouble with dispatch, we don't have enough people there and enough people to take calls, people die. And, and this service is every one of the emergency facilities in the county and even on backup call for other counties as well as Deming and Otero County as well. So it wasn't, we're doing the best we can. We've stepped up a lot of things. The facilities are good. The staff we have is great. We're able to do training now here in Las Cruces. Previously, up until this year, the training had to be done in Santa Fe. So now if anybody in the area wants to take the tests and take the training and go through it, they don't have to leave their homes to do it. And so we can do all that locally here. So anyway, I'm reaching out to tell everyone that we, we need more people trying to do this. And it's, if, once you get trained here, if you get certified at this facility, you're actually certified throughout the whole US to be a 911 operator or dispatch. So once you get the training, you get certification, you don't have to do it again in other states. It's pretty much done at that point. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. I'll keep mine short and sweet. We have a South Central Solid Waste Authority meeting on Thursday of this week. We have our Animal Services Meeting Thursday of next week. So we'll have an update on the 28th on those two boards. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. First on our presentation, we do have the Mesia Valley Economic Development Alliance, Mavida, Fiscal Year 25 Year End Presentation. And we do have our Economic Development Administrator, Ms. Carter here, and I also see Daven. So welcome to both of you.
Good morning. If I can have Mr. Lopez join me for the presentation. This is the end of your presentation, reporting on fiscal year 2025.
Thank you for that Denise, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Thank you for having me here today. This is our year-end presentation as of June 30th of 2025. As I like to do on a lot of presentations, I like to pepper in some of, some of the things that are actually taking place beyond just the contract itself. In the past, I've talked about like our marketing process and what that entails. I think last time around, I talked more about the site selection process and what that entails, how we respond to requests for information in companies. And this time around, I'd like to kind of talk about the projects we're seeing. And I'm going to try to be very quick. I know it's been a long agenda today. So first, straight to the numbers on the contract. If you look at that dashboard, that goes over most of the major metrics that we are recorded upon and whether we hit our numbers or not by the different bars. As you can see, we were a little bit low in terms of jobs creation and the capital, well, and the payroll that comes with that. We met most of the other parts of the metrics on that dashboard. One of the challenges we've had is beginning in about February, March of this year, tariff issues became something that has delayed projects. We weren't able to get them to the finish line as, as we thought we would. But we do think there's a pathway ahead and we look forward to this 25, 2025, 2026 fiscal year as an opportunity to get those companies back in. But how do we measure success when we have all these different types of metrics? When we do a weighted performance average, we met 97% of the goals that were set out for us by the contract. I like to remind everybody that, you know, when we talk about the impact of job creation and capital investment, that's a new tax base that comes into the region. When we do our impact analysis, we look at a break-even analysis for your investment in Mavida. It's really, on average, on average only, creation of 44 jobs and about $2.8 million in capital investment. And I think as you can see from that, by the numbers of 377 jobs created and almost $72 million in capital investment that was brought in and committed to the region, that we more than have made up for that taxpayer investment in this, in this program. One of the things in the contract also was $50,000 of the budget would be dedicated to business development and marketing activities within target industries in Donaña County. This is a breakout, breakout of what we've actually spent. So it totals about $401,000. That's as of April of this year. It does not factor in any type of office or occupancy costs. It doesn't factor in the cost to run our programs, like the incentives and the, and the certification programs that we run. And it doesn't really even factor the entire business development process. For example, when we actually have companies and the time we have to spend with them in terms of getting them to the finish line, this does not incorporate, this is purely marketing, business development outreach. And so I think we do with the budget we have and of course, the private sector investment that complements your investment. I think we do a pretty good job of really making national reach in terms of our efforts to market the opportunities for Donaña County. Talk a little bit about the strategic initiatives we work on that complement our ability to close deals. And this is above and beyond the contract and I know you are aware of some of these programs, so I'll be very quick with them. One of them is our New Mexico Border Plex Closing Incentive. That is an incentive that was, dollars came out of El Paso Electric many years ago as a result of their merger and their committed investment into economic development in the region. We had applied through a grant through the Community Foundation of Southern New Mexico to create a closing program. We're three years into that right now. We've supported 17 companies to locate and grow in the region, resulting in over 1,700 new economic-based jobs that have been announced and over $80 million in capital investment into the, into the region. What I love about this program is it's separate from the state's program. So although we can use these dollars to complement what they do, it really allows us to work with target industries that are more important for us here rather than what's taking place in Albuquerque or Northern New Mexico. Plus, it also helps us deal with companies like, smaller companies where state programs really may not be a good fit for them. Help a company buy a piece of equipment. They're able to hire one or two people and be productive. Our other program is called Automate Up Plus. That is a certification program that we've created to try to tackle some of the skillset gaps for technology-growing careers, everything from advanced manufacturing to coding, to telehealth, to AI and much others. We work with companies, trying to work with them to see if we can help their employees gain these new skillsets. But we've also expanded the programs to students as well, preparing them for the workforce. We went out and found so far about $70,000 in grants to make this program happen. And over the last two years, we've, we're in the process of having either certified or in, or certifying over 337 certifications, 217 individuals. So some of those individuals have more than one certification they're working on and supporting 13 companies. And that's about $208 per certificate that we're able to get out the door. So it's been a very successful program in that respect and helps to build our workforce. Another program we've been working on this year is really being aligned with some funding that has come out of the state legislature this year, specifically SB 169 Site Readiness Program and HB 19, the Trade Port Development Act. Both of those have infrastructure funding potentially for new types of industrial sites that we can, we can work on to try to really move more opportunities forward around the region. And I'll talk about that in just a second. But basically, right now, we are in the process of working with the state. A consultant has been hired and we are going through site characterization processes on new opportunities around the county. And we're currently working with not only landowners, but also ground developers on this process so that we can understand what their investment might be in the infrastructure required to put these, make these sites more productive. At the end of the day, the first, the first phase is characterization. And that basically will tell us, based on these sites identified, what infrastructure will be required so that we can prepare them for really success in attracting companies to those areas. And then the next phase will be whether there's funding from the state to actually start putting some type of actual hard infrastructure dollars into them. One of the things I'm excited about and I think we need to embrace going forward is that Trade Port Development Act. We were the first trade port established in New Mexico, one of only a handful in the country. And I think that gives us a great opportunity to really take advantage of this program, the funding from it and private-public, private-public partnerships that, that opened up as a result of it. The geographies for new, new sites we're looking at are in the Vado-Barino area, the old dairies. There's strategic reasons for that. About 300 acres in the Chaparral area. Also about 80 acres off of Highway 70 on the east side. And then there's three sites in Santa Teresa that are currently going through this site characterization process with the state of New Mexico. I want to share some industry trends we've been seeing. Some of these slides are wordy, so I'll let you read them and I'll just go through the highlights. I'm hoping maybe this sets up a conversation for us for a future work session though, to really go into detail as to what this all means in terms of strategic targeting and success of new companies and attracting new jobs. First, I want to talk about foreign direct investment and trade, looking at the, at Donaña County. We've been a big beneficiary of a lot of leads from onshoring and nearshoring. There's a lot to do with that, you know, supply chain disruptions of the past few years, rising costs of production and transportation overseas and the, really, the desire for manufacturers to be close to their US consumer. Another trend we're seeing with foreign direct investment is that, is Mexico and our trade with Mexico. It's no, it's no coincidence that Mexico has been the biggest beneficiary of production moving from Asia closer to North America. And in fact, in 2023, they overtook China as New Mexico's biggest trading partner as a result of that. As we see that trend to continue to grow and again, access to US consumer is key, we're going to see that our, our, our port of entry down in Santa Teresa is going to become that much more important. Already 20% of all US-Mexico trade goes through one of the ports along the US-Mexico border here in the Border Plex region. So we're looking at those opportunities to, to make sure we can attract logistics and distribution to enhance the flow of those goods to their final destinations. I also want to just say on this slide, this will probably be the biggest trend we're seeing. I don't see a slowdown in this over the next 15 to 20 years. It creates great opportunity for us from a geographical region. Again, we are slowed down by tariff discussions right now, but as soon as some more certainty comes to that, I think that both onshoring as well as the, the trade flow is going to, is going to progress quite well. Another trend we've been seeing over the past three to four years is really just low industrial inventory in terms of facilities that are available. Number one, just generally speaking, there's been a shortage of industrial all over the country. That has actually benefited us because over the last 15 to 20 years, one of the challenges we have is we don't have a ready-to-go facility or location and one of our competing areas does. And so if you have the choice of having certainty and moving into a location in six months versus building 13 to 15 months that that might take, that's a strategic advantage for us. And it's a short-term window of opportunity, but it's an opportunity nonetheless. We're also seeing in food logistics, a lot of companies and leads looking our way. There's been some changes in, in food distribution around the US, so. So I-10, I-25 corridor, our access to the port of entry make a lot of, a lot of success. But also the industry is sitting on a lot of old facilities. For example, cold storage, 80% of all cold storage in the United States, those facilities are over 40 years old. So as they're looking for new distribution models and new, new locations for long-term food storage, we become, we've been getting on the radar of a lot of those companies. The final trend we've been seeing over the past five years is what I'm calling kind of the rise of mega projects. And I would define a mega project as anything that's over 500 employees, over 500,000 square feet of facility space required and over $250 million in capital investment. Now that's our definition. You, you go to maybe a larger region like Houston or Phoenix, they may have a different definition of that. But that's kind of really our tipping point where we start to lose projects. One common denominator of all of this is that there's a lot of power requirements and other infrastructure requirements that are required for these companies to make a location decision. And now I put up here, advanced manufacturing, automation and AI have been the drivers. But it's interesting because advanced manufacturing is just not the ingot manufacturers, it's just not the silicon manufacturers. It's actually advanced manufacturing processes are being adopted into all forms of manufacturing, whether it's food processing or, or just, you know, some kind of suspension system for the automobile industry, for example. About five years ago, a big power project for us would have been about five megawatts. Now we're seeing companies on, on the regular ask for 25, 50 megawatts. And that is across the country. That is the new norm of manufacturing as they adopt more advanced manufacturing and automation into their processes. So I want to share some project profiles because I think this is the most interesting. The next three slides are showing the profiles of 125 projects over the last two years that we've looked at out of 216 projects. The 125 are really fact, are really looking at the manufacturing and high tech, you know, what's been the trend that we've been seeing. Of the other remaining projects, those are usually like office or distribution and warehousing. These are things that we know do not really take a lot of employees. They don't take a lot of energy, they don't take a lot of type, take a lot of infrastructure. So we, we've taken these out of the equation and really are focusing on the new, new type of manufacturing that we're seeing taking place. Facility square footage on average, although we've had one look at 4.1 million square foot of need, but on average, we have 264,000 square foot requests. The median is about 50,000 square feet. For number of employees, on average, 208 full-time equivalents and the median would be about 50 full-time equivalents. And for new capital expenditure is about an average of $510 million project request and about 94.5 million is the median. These are not something that are, are, are outside of what we're able to handle in terms of being able to offer that amount of employment for this area, for a, you know, rural area that we are compared to most major markets, nor is it out of line for the ability to construct these kinds of facilities in the area. Here's the most interesting part, I think, is really that infrastructure requirements. And again, these are companies that are doing national, international searches. And in many cases, we are seeing as more Asian companies are looking to put manufacturers in place here, they're, they're retooling from the beginning. They're, they have not done these kinds of manufacturing facilities many times here in the US because we're talking about facilities in China, for example, that went from very labor intensive to something that is very more highly automated. So that's kind of a difference, but those highly automated facilities require a lot more infrastructure. So on average, you can see for the power side of it, which has been our biggest challenge, on average, the projects are looking for 146 megawatts, but the median is 20 megawatts. That, that's pretty much the norm of what we're seeing going forward. In terms of water, water needs, we've seen, now there's a couple of outliers here that are moving the pendulum to the right here, but on average, we see companies asking for 1.4 million gallons a day and a median of 248,000 gallons per day. And let me just be clear here. We also call all of this our lost opportunities report because if we don't have the power, the water or the wastewater to deliver, they move to where they can. They're not looking, most companies are not looking to make the investment to make it happen. That's just the reality of it is. And that's been the nature of site selection for many, many years. And that's why sometimes we don't get the projects because the state overall has not invested in all the infrastructure that's required to keep up with the economic development needs. But look, but if you look at the minimum right there, the minimum request we had this year was 14,000 gallons per day. So that's kind of like an expectation, I think, of what we're going to see going forward. 14,000 to 50,000 gallons per day are realistic projects we can handle. And wastewater is a similar thing, 1.1 million gallons per day on average and 173,000 gallons per day with wastewater. Now, this is a little bit interesting. This is our lost projects and we broke them into the sectors of industrial that we're seeing the trends in. This represents, represents about 90% of all our manufacturing and high tech projects. The other 10% are more your traditional mechanized manufacturing types of projects which are starting to go away. But you can see 24.1% were related to advanced manufacturing, 20.7% were related to value added ag. And you can see 24% were related to mega projects, 6.9% to data centers and 13.8% of all projects we saw were related to onshoring. Now, if you look at the yellow boxes below, these are the ones we call lost opportunities because we just did not have infrastructure to support them. So 57% of the advanced manufacturing, we weren't able to accommodate the conversations needed to get to a successful win. Within the value added ags, luckily in value added ag, we're able to support all of the project request needs. So that's a very positive. The mega projects, 66.7%, we were not able to get to the finish line because of the, well, we weren't, we weren't able to answer the infrastructure needs that were required. On data centers, 100%, we cannot answer the required infrastructure improvements that they needed. And for onshoring, it's about 60%. So this, this goes to back to that site readiness program. We have provided this information to the state as part of the Santa Teresa report that was worked on by Chris, Dr. Chris Erickson's group. But also this was some of the information that was provided to the, to the state to help fuel the discussion on the need for site readiness. So overall, our biggest challenge is overcoming infrastructure constraints in terms of most of our projects. Lack of inventory, we need more developers to kind of work on spec development here in the area, put facilities in the ground. So we're ready to, to accommodate the requests as companies are looking for them. National regulations, there's nonle tariffs, but CFIUS has been a big issue that's come up, especially for foreign direct investment, looking at our area. Lack of existing industry, that's really more supply chain. Companies are always saying, do we have enough supply chain of what they need in the area in order for them to make a decision? And then finally workforce. What's interesting about this, if you would have asked me five years ago, the number one challenge that we had to answer above all else was always workforce. Do we have the workforce and skill sets necessary? That over the last five years, that has completely flipped on its head where now that's kind of down the line in terms of when the company is starting to ask and it becomes a priority to them. So I want to talk about a little bit about site readiness and I'm going to, I'm not going to read these, you have them in your packet, but I'll just kind of summarize. Let me just restate, I think we're in an amazing position to attract more foreign direct investment, whether that's through the repurposing of production, you know, coming directly to the US. We're right in the middle of being able to reach supply chain, being central to North America, both on the border with Mexico and the US, but then reaching that US consumer. And then of course, of all the logistics flow that will enhance and increase as more, as more companies start to move to, to Mexico as well. Because the common denominator is they're, they're looking to reach a US customer base. That's the common denominator. But lack of infrastructure has held us back and will continue to hold us back unless we're ready to really take on that challenge. 36 states as of this, as of April have had very robust site readiness programs. We're glad the state of New Mexico, we're finally entering that mix. We're not quite at the level of these other states, but I only put this on here so you can see, maybe read a little bit about it. And maybe during a work session, we can talk more about kind of what, how these programs look and work. But even at the local levels and we compete again, we compete with Texas for every single project. This is their funding just for a few communities that we compete against based on the population base that may be similar to our region here. And the amount that they can invest in economic development. And what makes this interesting is that they're very nimble with how they can use these dollars. They can use it for incentives, they can use it to invest directly in infrastructure, they can use it to construct buildings. It's very flexible what, what Texas allows these communities to work on for economic development and how competitive they are. We lost a local project about a year ago that went to Abilene. I won't mention the name of it. It's a, it's a family who's been here for a long time doing business here, but they found that it was just more robust to locate in Texas based on what Texas was able to bring to the table. Some things I think we can do. And again, I'll, I'll read these quickly, but I think this is really for a work session discussion that should be considered. I really think Doñana County, you've heard me say this for a while, we need our own localized closing fund. Although we have the closing fund that we've received from dollars from the, that El Paso Electric New Mexico Economic Development Fund, it's very limited and there's no assurances year to year, we're going to have access to more dollars. But I think we've shown the success of what a localized fund like that could do to bring in businesses and grow local businesses here in the region. And I, I, I think there's some substance there and I think there's some opportunity for the county to play a larger role in that. Local site readiness funding, we've talked about the site readiness funding coming from the state of New Mexico through not only the site readiness program, but also the Trade Port Act. But if we're able, it's going to be competitive. We're going to be competing for those dollars with other areas around the state. But I do feel if Doñana County was able to also invest alongside that state program, it allows us to win more of those dollars that the state is putting out there. That also goes into maximizing the Trade Port Development Act. Public-private partnerships. The Trade Port Development Act has opened that opportunity up for those trade port designated areas where it has not really been allowed in the rest of the state of New Mexico. So how we approach that, how we find partnerships, I think we have an opportunity here to, which is not a dollar cost opportunity, it's just how we create programs to be more effective with private sector. And finally, attracting speculative development to assist with infrastructure. We're working on a program with the city of Las Cruces right now to test this out at their Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park. We actually just were, we received an award at the governor's conference on economic development for that. But basically, we've never been good in New Mexico about attracting developers to build spec. There's no tools that say, hey, put your capital investment and risk into New Mexico versus other states. And in many cases, they come in and when they're doing ground development projects, they're taking care of the infrastructure, some of the infrastructure needs that we have to take care of anyway, and we're always trying to find new dollars for. In the case with the city of Las Cruces, we're working with one national developer who is looking at a specific site. And in their planning, they're willing to take care of road extensions and utility extensions that would otherwise have cost the city about 700, $800,000 to do on their own. So these are just some ideas, but I think maybe at a future work session, we can talk about, you know, the competitiveness we can take to attract more job opportunities, especially higher level opportunities that are coming our way from advanced manufacturing and some of the other trends we've been seeing. So I'm sorry, maybe a little bit long, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Devin. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner.
Yeah, go ahead. Just a couple of comments and I appreciate Devin that you included some of the, noted some of the, the infrastructure challenges that we have. I think, you know, I think as, as we continue to move forward and continue to try to find opportunities for, for economic development here, I think it's going to be important for us to take a look at this and continue to understand where our challenges continue to be. Obviously, we know the issue with water that we say that we're looking at in the southern part of the county. But, and I think we also see some of the power development. And I know this was probably more tailored to Doñana County, but I think even with the city of Las Cruces is finding some challenges around infrastructure as well. And so I'd, I'd love to see how, as we continue to move forward, that we find out, you know, is there opportunities here to take a look at this? And I see as we have our esteemed Senator Steinborn here in the back, one of the things that I continue to see is around particularly power and how the ETA has, in my mind, needs to be reevaluated and looked at six years into or since approval. And one of the examples that I see is back in the state of California where their state legislature, understanding the need for additional power resources, actually set aside back in 2023, up to $150 million for power providers to upgrade and have additional megawatts without having to create or, or build additional facilities. So it's trying to manage the current installed base with renewables, but understanding that at the moment, renewables have not been able to backfill the grid as reliably as they hoped. And so like I said, I think it, I'm hoping that there's something that we'll be able to look at that as well as, I think, as we continue to look potentially at the spaceport and the spaceport GRT with that potentially, hopefully we will be able to sunset that GRT in the future. But I think it's going to be coming upon the state to be able to fund that. And as we look, and I know there's a lot of, you know, I've heard from the legislature and some of the committees, there's been some criticism around spaceport, but we continue to see other states stepping up and giving more funding to their spaceports, which make it to where our current spaceport is not going to be able to compete. And so if we don't find ways to make ourselves marketable and competitive, we will continue to lose more of these opportunities, not, you know, for, for other reasons to our neighboring states. And I think we have a prime opportunity where we've been working with, you know, with, with the state of Chihuahua, Cielo de Juarez, El Paso, city of El Paso, El Paso County in our region. And I think we, we, as we continue to find that and how we really promote Santa Teresa as the port of entry here in the state of New Mexico, we are in my mind with, I think you mentioned all the, all the different opportunities that we have, I think we need to continue to fight on that and work with our legislators to see how we can continue to position ourselves in the future. But we have to recognize where our limitations are and how we can address those in the future.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, completely agree. I think we have a very unique opportunity here. The Borderplex region as a whole is a unique geographical area and it's, you don't always find it where we have a geographical area that is perfectly positioned to attract industry, but also provide benefits to them being here, working on both sides of the border, cutting their supply chains down and then having access to a US, a large US consumer base within a 48 hour period, oh, yeah, 48 hour drive time. You know, usually companies we see, they're saying, hey, I need an East Coast location. I need a West Coast location. And in the middle, we, there's just always been a void. So I think our time has come, but again, I think we have a window of opportunity. It's not going to be open forever and we have to take advantage of that. And we have to state, and I think locally, we have to make investments into the infrastructure that's going to support that growth and opportunities for our residents.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Reynolds.
Devin, thank you for this information. I thought it was very enlightening and a very good presentation and gave us a lot of good information. I will say that this board over the last year and a half or two years have actually taken a hard look at a lot of the things that you've presented today and recognize that there are some, there are some boundaries we can't cross and there are some, you know, opportunities that we can't even attempt to compete for unless we fix the infrastructure. And I'll give you a little bit of an insight and a couple of things that we're doing. Number one is we're actually trying to figure out a way to get control of the water all over the whole county because the problem we have with the, with the fire department, okay, and the fire hydrants. Right now, we have no good mechanism in order to police that and to make sure that the fire hydrants actually meet the standards required by the ISO. So we are, we are actively working to try to create policy that will give us better control of that. The desalination plant, I'm going to, I mean, something going to point that out as something we've been talking about for over a year, year and a half. And the reason that that is important is because there's an aquifer with over 800 years worth of water we need to access. And we can't do that without desalination of some sort. So this is, even though we mentioned that some of the funding was coming from, because of the project Jupiter, this, this, this desalination action is not being taken because of Jupiter. It's been taken because we know it's necessary to fix the water problems in the county. Something else that we're focusing on that's not really relevant and not really apparent at this point is trying to fix our wastewater. The wastewater throughout the county is because we've had so many septic tanks and we don't have a good wastewater system, we haven't built that infrastructure. I think that is also a paramount effort that this county has to address in every community and figure out if we're going to have businesses there, they can't run on septic tanks. We can't. We can't open a grocery store and put it on a septic tank. So we have to upgrade our sewer systems all over the whole county in order to provide some of the infrastructure that's necessary, it's not even mentioned in your report. Along with that, we also have to figure out a way to treat the wastewater and have wastewater treatment plants so we can actually recycle the water and make it usable and potable as well. So these are, these are things that we aren't acting on today. We're not acting on, you know, we haven't acted on it at the county, but we certainly have an eye on some of those challenges and looking forward to that as a necessary requirement in order to move, be competitive in the, in the business market. And I've only mentioned a handful, but I'll also mention one other thing, and that is that the money that we collect in the GRT tax for the spaceport is only available to secure bonds. That money cannot be directly provided to the spaceport for any projects or any operations. That is a state responsibility because it's a state unit, okay? And we, Otero County and Doñana County are the only two counties in the state that are actually funding a state, a state organization. The rest of them, there's no other county funding a state organization except us. So we do need to look seriously at the spaceport GRT tax, which is now up to over 16 million a year, and figure out a way to return that back in the community to help solve some of these problems that we desperately need to address in order to protect our community. And so we've been in this now for 20, what, 18 years? We've got two years, about two and a half, three years left on the, on the contract with the spaceport, and we do need to sunset those taxes and get the states to take responsibility for that, that project. Anyway, thank you for all this information. I think it's, it's going to help us to decide where our priorities are for the, for the future. And it does also support a lot of the efforts that we've already started putting forth in order to try to address the ability to raise the standard of living for everyone in the county. And what your data is actually showing is it's consistent with what we believe we're working for in order to make things better. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Thank you, Devin. We appreciate you.
And we thank you for your time and your partnership.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we do have item number 25, which is to discussion and action to cure Open Meetings Act violation alleged to have occurred at the commission meeting on September 19th. Relating to the commission's motion to close the meeting and enter into executive session is authorized by NMSA 1978, Section 10153B, 1997. And we do have our interim county attorney, Ms. Neal, here to guide us through this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Sheldon Hernandez, vice chair commissioners. If you recall, at the last meeting on September 19th, there was a large crowd present. We had presentations pertaining to Project Jupiter, and then you went into closed session. When you came out of closed session, we had hours of public comment regarding Project Jupiter, which was incredible and informative. You then had open discussion where each of the commissioners was given time to discuss your thoughts, and finally, you took vote in the open, within the open meeting. That vote was recorded in the minutes of the meeting. After that meeting, the county received notice of allegations that the motion to go into closed session was made improperly and was therefore not compliant with the Open Meetings Act. As provided by NMSA Section 10153B, a public body has 15 days to cure a claimed violation of the Open Meetings Act. That is the subject of this presentation. So as we know, New Mexico recognizes the importance of having an informed electorate, and so the OMA or Open Meetings Act requires meetings of certain bodies to be held in public. We also know that there are certain exceptions to the type of information that has to be shared in the public forum. The most important here is the seventh exception, matters of attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation. On September 19th, there was a motion to go into closed session regarding a limited personnel matter, the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property and water rights to discuss information that is covered by attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation as authorized by the Open Meetings Act, Section 10-15-1H27 and 8. Prior to the motion that resulted in closed session, a motion was made regarding the approval of Project Jupiter. The motion was seconded, which allowed discussion of Project Jupiter. Based on this fact, the only discussion allowed at that time was related to Project Jupiter, even in a closed session. With the understanding, sorry, I jumped ahead, with the understanding that a motion was on the table related to Project Jupiter, that the board was acting within its right to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to threatened litigation, and believing that the public understood the rules, that no discussion was allowed other than matters pertaining to Project Jupiter, you moved into closed session. While the commission was in closed session, the discussion was properly limited to attorney-client advice related to threatened litigation. There was no discussion of the positions or thoughts on Project Jupiter, no decisions or discussions about how to vote, and no vote taken during closed session. So what could we have done better? We could have been more specific in the motion itself, and when the public began to shout and ask questions, more specific in the explanation of that motion. So a better motion would have been to say, I move to go into closed session to discuss information that is covered by attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened litigation concerning Project Jupiter, as authorized by the Open Meetings Act, Section 10151H7. If you recall, I said earlier that the public body has 15 days to cure an alleged violation of the Open Meetings Act. The public body is not expected to wait until a finding of violation before it takes action. There is some guidance from both the Attorney General and New Mexico courts that explain how to cure violations of the Open Meetings Act. Unfortunately, I have not found any that are exactly on point, but I have found some information that is very helpful. For example, our Attorney General Raul Torres, on January 10th of this year, published a letter to Judge William Lang. In that letter, AG Torres cited the OMA with regard to going into closed session, saying, similar to posting an agenda, "Before a public body may enter into closed session, an individual member must make a motion to do so that specifies both the applicable OMA section and the subject to be discussed with reasonable specificity. Together, these requirements ensure that interested members of the public are given reasonable notice about the topics a public body plans on discussing or addressing at the meeting." Based on this guidance, the preferred motion would have been, would have added the detail that the closed meeting was being convened in order to discuss specifically to discuss threatened litigation against the county associated with Project Jupiter, subject to attorney-client privilege. That specific detail would have been provided despite the fact that the motion relating to Project Jupiter was already pending at the time the meeting was closed and no other discussion was allowed. But the letter from AG Torres continues to say notably, "The OMA does not require strict or perfect specificity, but instead reasonable specificity. In the past, when interpreting the Inspection of Public Records Act, our Court of Appeals explained that the word reasonable involves an objective under-the-circumstances approach that involves considering all of the applicable facts and circumstances. This objective, fact-specific analysis is perhaps even more appropriate for the OMA, since New Mexico's appellate courts have emphasized that this statute requires substantial, not strict, compliance. Given that, despite any alleged lack of specificity in the motion to go into a closed meeting on September 19th, the commission did substantially comply with the OMA, because it took a vote to go into closed session as required, made the proper statements on the record after the closed session had ended, and then not only discussed, but also took a vote in the open session." The courts expand on the, on the importance of open discussion and open votes in several cases. The things the court looked at and considered most important were this: Were the parties involved given opportunity to present their case or their side? Were the parties involved given the opportunity to convince the board of how to vote? Was sufficient discussion of the matter allowed? Was the corrective action taken, done in good faith? Did the corrective action give sufficient information so that substantial compliance with the OMA was met? We are in a different place than any guidance I could find. The only question is in relation to the motion to go into closed session and the specificity provided. Everything surrounding the motion was done properly, including the vote itself to go into closed session and then coming back out of closed session. The Open Meetings Act requires that a roll call vote on the motion to go into closed session be taken, with a majority improving the closure. The record reflects that that occurred in the open portion of the meeting. The Open Meetings Act requires that the minutes for the meeting state that the matters to be discussed in the closed meeting were limited to the specific, specified, to those specified in the motion to close. The records reflect that that statement was made. The commission reconvened in open session and then went on to, to conduct a lengthy and robust public debate. The commission's discussion and action related to Project Jupiter was held in open session, which fulfilled the OMA's purpose of ensuring that public bodies make decisions in the open where the interested public can observe the action. Further, during the closed meeting, the commissioners did not discuss any item that was not related to Project Jupiter, and the conversation was limited to matters pertaining to threatened litigation. Procedurally, this puts us in an odd space of needing to cure the alleged OMA violation, but having no procedural guidance from Roberts Rules of Order. So the recommendation then is that you correct the record and cure any open, potential Open Meetings Act violation by clarifying the motion as previously expressed, which includes both the authority to close the meeting and a reasonably specific description about what was to be discussed in the closed session. So I would recommend that you take a motion to enter this response into public record to show that the concerns have been addressed and that you provide the minutes of this meeting or my notes from this presentation as a supplement to the minutes from the last meeting to show that this issue has been addressed. Thank you.
Commissioners, any comments or questions for Ms. Neal while she's at the podium?
I don't have any questions or comments, but I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to enter in, enter the clarifying statement, quote, "I move to go into closed session to discuss information that is covered by attorney-client privilege pertaining to the threatened litigation concerning Project Jupiter, as authorized by the Open Meetings Act, Section 10-15-1H7, NMSA 1978," end quote, into record, as well as any notes of Mrs. Neal's that she's presented today, to show that we have addressed a specific concern about how we went into closed session.
Okay, we have a motion on the table? Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, comments, questions, or concerns? I do have a question, Ms. Neal. So by us making this statement, so we are putting this, we're going to attach this to today's meeting minutes to show that this was cured and this was the mechanism used?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
May I point out that this doesn't, this doesn't eliminate the opportunity for someone to challenge us. So what we're doing is trying to correct the situation, and, and this doesn't prevent anybody else from still taking additional action if they choose to.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Neal, to add to that?
No, Mr. Chair, other than it is true that someone could still take additional action, this, the action that we are taking is the action that has been recommended as closely as I could determine by the Attorney General's office and by the courts. And so hopefully, if there was additional action, the Attorney General or the courts would recognize that the board had already taken action to correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments? Any public comment? Seeing none? Brandy, go ahead and roll calls on the motion at hand.
Commissioner Gámez?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapado?
Mr. Chair Farmay, I didn't quite hear the motion from Commissioner Reynolds, and I apologize, I thought I'd written it down. Commissioner, would you repeat your?
The motion is stated on the screen.
Thank you.
Okay.
This came up.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion does pass. Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Ms. Neal, for guiding us through that topic. Next up is meeting minutes, our regular meeting minutes for September 19th and our B O C C work session October 7th.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate if, I guess if I make a motion that we approve regular meeting minutes as amended for September 19th, 2025, since there, just technically we're adding that comment? Or do we need to?
Ms. Neal, did you hear the question?
So the, the comment would be added or noted specifically in the minutes of this meeting? The only way to add that to the previous minutes would be to amend the meeting minutes, and I didn't feel like that was an appropriate way to cure the issue because then it would change what had actually occurred. And so this is just providing additional information.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. So I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes for September 19th, 2025, and of the B O C C work session on October 7th, 2025.
Okay, I will go ahead and second that motion to approve. Commissioners, comments, questions on the meeting minutes? Brandy, I do have to say, I thank you for getting this done. I know it was a heavy, heavy order, but I was going through it today, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else?
I have a comment.
Okay. I'm just seeing if any other commissioner has discussion first. Seeing none? Okay. Ms. Moore, if you want to join us?
Commissioners, I'm Lynn Moore. Defects exist with the minutes and the agenda for the September 19th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting and with today's agenda. The New Mexico Open Meetings Act requires that public bodies keep written minutes at public meetings that include the substance of the proposals considered. The Attorney General's Compliance Guide says this means the minutes must contain a description of the subject of all discussions had by the body. Agenda Item 7 for the September 19th meeting stated, quote, "Award project contract to Linco Electric through CES in the amount not to exceed $587,990.54 for the purchase and installation of the backup generator at the new OEM facility," close quote. It didn't say what CES or the OEM facility is. It seems to be written in code. The meeting minutes you're considering today replicate this cryptic language, so the minutes fail to describe the subject. Unless you're part of an enclave of staffers or a party involved, you don't know what this is about. I certainly don't understand the subject of all discussions about this item, which the act requires. Agenda Item 11 for the September 19th meeting says it's about approving an ordinance for several limited liability companies pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act. Neither the agenda nor the minutes under consideration today, which use the same language, tells us who these companies are beyond their names, nor do they say why these companies need an ordinance. What do these companies want to do? So the agenda is defective and action taken on that item invalid. Plus, the written minutes don't enlighten and fail to describe the subject of all discussions had by the body as the act requires. Agenda Item 32 on today's agenda is also a Agenda Item 32 on today's agenda is also impaired because of the defects at the September 19th meeting agenda and repeats the same defects with respect to any consideration today. The county can't evade its responsibilities by including links in the meeting video in minutes. The act requires minutes be written, and minutes themselves contain a description of the subject of all discussions had by the body. Furthermore, because the minutes don't provide any summary of the discussion for any of the items and instead just list links to YouTube, this means that any citizen who wants to know what happened at a meeting must have ready access to a computer or similar device, as well as reliable Internet service. Many deficiencies in Internet service exist in this state. Forcing one to have access to a computer and rely upon the Internet to find out what happened is unacceptable, especially given the act's requirement of written minutes. It's also short-sighted to fail to prepare fully compliant written minutes in light of the prevalence of computer hackers and those in the business of disabling government computer systems. Please disapprove the draft minutes for the September 19th meeting and instruct that all future minutes be fully written, providing a description of the subject of all discussions and by the body. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this? Seeing none, Brandy?
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds? Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapado? I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Abstain.
Chair Shal Jordan on this?
Yes. Meeting minutes for both the B O C C work session and the regular meeting is approved. I have been asked that we take a short break right now. The current time is 12 o'clock. We'll take a 10-minute break. Does that work for you? Okay. We will be back at 12:10. 12:14, we're back in open session. And we're going to move on with item number 27. I'll let everyone get back to their seats. I got four commissioners.
May I have a call?
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, we have item number 27, which is the annexation petition submitted by the City of Sunland Park for approximately 533.82 acres located along the northwest municipal boundary of the City of Sunland Park and Pete Domenici Highway. Commissioners? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we actually postpone this until we determine the action that this board needs to take on this item. Because, because I think, actually indefinitely.
Okay, so we do have a motion to postpone. And did you say indefinitely, or did you say a date certain, sir?
I would like to postpone this motion, I would like to make a motion to postpone this request indefinitely.
All right. So a motion to postpone this request indefinitely. Okay, do we have a second? If someone wants a second, just so that we can discuss it?
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second, because I'm kind of curious. I just, I don't understand why, but I'll second it so we can have discussion.
Okay, now we can have discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Mr. Chair, I'd like, the reason I'd like to make this motion to postpone this item indefinitely is because I think it actually violates some state statutes in the requests that they're making and the action they're trying to take. And we need time for our legal counsel and county manager to review some of the requirements here and decide what action they recommend this board take. If we take any action on this item today, I think it will be premature until they've had a chance to research some of the options that they want to present to the board.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments on the motion or any questions about it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I don't know that postponing indefinitely is gonna, I guess, I don't know that that solves the problem. I don't know if we, I think we'd better off doing it to a date certain. But I don't know if there's a specific day we have to provide a response to the City of Sunland Park. And I don't know if Ms. Ainsworth might be able to respond to that.
Mr. Chair, the commission has 30 days to provide comments, and we are very close. So I am concerned that if you do not provide comments, that you will miss your opportunity to provide comments. I don't have the date when Sunland Park will be considering, when their council will be considering the annexation, but I believe it's fairly soon. I just sent a message to Albert, and I'm hoping he might have that information.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask for a recommendation from council.
I see Albert checking his phone. Maybe we can use a Lifeline?
Who? Oh.
Okay. The council will be considering it this week, the Sunland Park Council. So they will have it on their council agenda this week.
Okay. But I think the question was from our council?
Yes.
Ms. Neal?
Given that they need some sort of a response, then I would recommend that either the commissioners table it for a date certain and make that date certain very soon and hold a special meeting, or that the commissioners go ahead and vote based off of the information that you have.
Okay. So personally, I don't know if I want to opt out on making comments. I would like to discuss that. So I'm not exactly wanting to postpone, especially not indefinitely. But that's just me, my thoughts on this.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to ask council a question.
Of course.
Does the closed session that we can convene actually cover a discussion that we could have about this item?
So provided that the discussion that would be going, that we would be having in closed session is directly related to one of the exceptions, which is directly related to one of the exceptions, which would be land issues or attorney-client privilege related to threatened or pending investigation, then, then yes, you could convene in closed session to discuss that matter.
And is in your opinion, do you believe that the discussion we should have could actually be, meet that criteria?
I believe that it could, depending on what the vote, or what the commissioners are considering. If you're concerned about threatened or pending litigation, then, then yes, it definitely falls under that. The land use would be a little bit harder, I think, but we could we could find discussion under that exception as well. It would just have to be limited to one of those exceptions, whatever discussion was had.
Mr. Chair. Then I'd like to make a second motion, okay?
You'd like to amend your motion?
No, I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session. Convene in closed session regarding limited personnel matter to purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property and water rights to discuss information that is covered by attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation as authorized by the Open Meetings Act ten dash fifteen dash one, H two, seven, and eight, NMSA. Specifically, this will be about pending litigation.
Okay, there's a motion to go into closed session for threatened and pending litigation. Is there a second, commissioners? Okay, so that motion does die for closed session. So we're back at the motion at hand, which is the motion to postpone this indefinitely.
Mr. Chairman, for what it's worth, and I, I will say the reason I didn't second the motion to go into closed session was probably because the motion at hand was talking about postponement, not on the topic or the actual agenda item number twenty-seven. But I think given the suggestion that we don't have guidance on what to do, I think when I'm looking at the executive summary, it's pretty in my mind, it's clear on the suggestion to approve it. Conditionally approve it. But I think the only question would be is that you know, and I don't know if there's any other suggestions, but I think there is guidance here within the agenda of, from staff on what to do.
Okay.
So I don't know, in my mind, I wouldn't support an indefinite postponement at this time.
Okay, anything else commissioners before I have Brandy roll calls on this? Okay, Brandy, if you can roll calls on indefinite postponement of this agenda item, please.
Commissioner Garmados?
No.
Commissioner Reynolds?
No.
Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
Vice Chair Chapado?
No.
Chair Shalja Wernandez?
No. The motion does fail, so now we need to come up with a new motion, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we consider a response to the annexation petition submitted by the city of Sunland Park for approximately five hundred and thirty-three point eight-two acres located along the northwest municipal boundary of the city of Sunland Park and Pete Domenici Highway.
Okay, I will second that motion. Christina, now I'll let you talk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a petition for annexation that was received by the city of Sunland Park, and they are requesting comments from the B O C C. It's approximately five hundred and thirty-three acres, three hundred and, three hundred and seven of which will be used for a future mixed land use project. The applicants on the petition are CG Seven LLC, Messia Bolson Properties LLC, Lenmark Construction, and Marcos Rivera. There are no county-owned properties or rights of way within the requested annexation. And the properties are contiguous to the city of Sunland Park. These areas, the darkened areas here are the subject property. Here you can see their parcel or their survey that they provided, also the dark hatch are the areas that are being requested to annex. And here's the aerial, you can see also the boundary of the city of Sunland Park is this light gray area. And there is a gap here with an existing residential area that is still in the unincorporated county. And here another, this is the zoning map that shows the current zoning in the county and also the boundary of Sunland Park, which is this darker area. And the subject properties are outlined in dark blue here. So the D R C did meet on October second and recommended that the commission provide comments to approve the annexation conditionally. And that would be with the condition to include the areas that are being left in the unincorporated area due to potential confusion with emergency response and just jurisdictional confusion in general. This is the area that we're talking about, it's an existing residential area. And there are a couple of, I believe there are some ponding areas within there, and there's also some apartments. So the property is planned to be annexed for a master-planned mixed community, mixed-use community. The property owners will also be pursuing P I D and T I D within Sunland Park if it is approved. They will have residential density that varies from three point two-five units per acre to four point seven units per acre. They are proposing lots from forty-five hundred square feet to six, or forty, yeah, forty-five hundred square feet to six thousand square feet. And this is their preliminary sketch that they provided in their application. This is the subject property, it's currently vacant land. And agency comments that were provided, N M D O T does not oppose the annexation so long as the maintenance remains the same. And Flood Commission provided comments regarding leaving that area outside of the county or outside of their annexation, which would create that jurisdictional confusion. And so staff did provide a letter that was drafted based on the D R C's comments. Of course, the B O C C at their discretion may modify, reject the letter entirely, provide different comments. And of course, staff would modify the draft and provide that as approved by this body. And I will stand for questions.
So Christina, really quickly, so this, on the map that you're showing, that's the donut we constantly refer to in Sunland Park?
Yes, it's this area right here.
Okay. Okey-dokey, any questions from Ms. Ainsworth?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Sanchez.
I'm just curious, because of the language of the letter, it seems a more positive approach. Is that the intent, that maybe if we take a more positive approach in our wording with them, they'll actually listen or be receptive to listening to us? Because I, I guess, in my mind, I'm still of the mind that we we are against this annexation because it creates this issue. But wasn't sure, like I said, the way it's worded, it seems like, okay, you know, we can go along with it if, if you do this, if you'll, if you will meet the condition. As I said, it just seems like a more positive approach, and I'm all for finding ways for us to have a very positive relationship with our municipalities. Especially given this has been a longstanding issue with the city of Sunland Park and they continue to move forward regardless of what we ask or request for, to meet for the public safety's perspective. And I think that's what's very clear here, is the idea that this creates that donut hole, which creates the potential for confusion as to who and what jurisdiction is to respond for that area.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sanchez. Unfortunately, that gap already exists. The city of Sunland Park boundary already encompasses this area. What they're doing is actually making the hole smaller if they do approve this annexation. And, you know, I you know, responding to your comments regarding the letter being positive or not, you know, from a staff perspective, which is what we're providing, there was no technical reason other than that there is a gap to, to not move forward, I guess. However, the B O C has additional discretion to look at other aspects of the annexation and provide a different opinion, obviously, than what staff would be reviewing. And like I said, we only are looking at technical aspects of the annexation. Does it meet the criteria? It does, it is adjacent to their city limits, it is within their E T J. And so they can annex the property at their discretion. However, there are some issues with that hole that already exists. And, you know, from a staff perspective, it would be much better if they just completely eliminated that, that gap. And, you know, at your discretion, you can also look at other issues that you can take into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, I just, I think, like you said, you recognize it, it has existed, it's already in existence, it has existed. My concern is, as you, as they continue to develop this, it create, right now, as you mentioned, it is vacant land. So it's very clear that unless, you know, you know, if you say where they're responding, they're not gonna respond to a house in an area that's currently vacant. But if they continue to build out, it will, it will just add further to the confusion because it's like, okay, now for public safety perspective, it's like, what neighborhood are they in? Oh, okay, it's, it's this side of this, or it's this side of that, and do we have the right jurisdiction? And so I completely agree, I think I'm, I think part of my issue and frustration is, is exactly this, is that the city has continued to refuse to do this. Probably for economic reasons. But it seems like, you know, for, for the good of the community, if they wanted to do this, they should consider as we said, that annexation, but they've continued to rebuff our, our requests and suggestions in the past, so. I appreciate your input, thank you, Ms. Ainsworth.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Garmados.
Thank you. So I know it's staff's recommendation for Sunland Park to absorb that community that's within the middle. But there is an issue with that. The members of that community are not, do not want to be annexed by Sunland Park. And I don't know what the past was with the other communities and how Sunland Park came to annex them. I know the community that's on the other side of Pete Domenici, a lot of those people were not aware that they were part of Sunland Park. When I was doing my campaigning, there was, some of the residents had erected like a, you know, like a structure in front of their yard, and they had, you know, steel beams and then tarps on there. It was really nice, but they didn't realize that that was not permitted. And they received letters from the city of Sunland Park. A lot of them didn't know why they were receiving this letter, because they thought they were still, they were county. And I, and just from campaigning down there, you know, I just heard a lot of residents not wanting to be a part of Sunland Park. So I have an issue with that, where we're just gonna say, well, you need to take that over when residents don't really want to. And especially since they haven't been notified, would they be notified? And then is there a period for them to contest this as well? Because I know there is a sign that was erected to notify other landowners around the area, but not these people. So how would we go about that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Garmados, you're correct, there would have to be a process for the annexation proposal to be amended and notification sent by the city of Sunland Park if indeed they do decide to pursue annexation of that area. Currently, Sunland Park has a petition that was submitted by the property owners of the areas that they are considering. And so Sunland Park could, at their discretion, include that other area, but they would have to have consent, or at least majority consent of the property owners. So if they did indeed send notices, received opposition, then they would not be able to move forward with that annexation.
Okay, so from what I'm understanding is that if Sunland Park were to agree to place this in part of their annexation, they would have to amend this petition to include them, and then they would have to notice, notify them as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Because I, I don't know how big that area is compared to the other plots that are, you know, the majority of the people that were, or the landowners that were wanting to be included in the annexation. Do you know?
Just from looking at it, it's probably, it's less than half of the area that would be included if they did pursue annexing that section. And I mean, Sunland Park can, they could proceed with the annexation that they, that they currently have and then look at annexing that other portion later. Or they could, you know, go ahead with trying to include it now, it would be up to Sunland Park how they wanted to proceed. They could also just not pursue it and move forward with what they have.
Okay, so this type of annexation that they're doing, living that area in the middle, that's what it's considered, they consider that an island or a donut hole?
Yes.
Correct?
That's correct.
So according to state statute, it says that, let's see. That under, I'm sorry, I'm on a different one. That that the land, it needs to be contiguous to the existing limits. But that they could, that it's not, I say, you can't leave an island or a donut hole. And that's why staff is stating that they should annex that?
It's, it's not good practice, Commissioner Garmados, to leave a donut hole like that, but it's not strictly prohibited. As long as the, the area that they're planning to annex is contiguous, then it's allowed. And unfortunately, that's why there is currently a donut hole in that area.
And by any chance, do we know why the city of Sunland Park doesn't want to annex that portion?
You know, unfortunately, I don't have that information, but I don't know if they've ever considered annexing it or why they annexed around it. Unfortunately, I don't have the history of the annexation for the surrounding area.
Well, I don't know about the rest of the board, but if, if Sunland Park, you know, were to follow the recommendation of staff here, for me, I would definitely want them to notify those, the community there, I know that they are dead set against it. And, but that would allow them to come to, when the ordinance for them to do this, to come and appeal it, right? To come and voice their opinion, I know that there is a procedure that they have to follow.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Garmados, yes, there is a process that has to be followed if they would include additional areas. There would be public hearings, and those residents would have the opportunity to attend those meetings or submit comments in writing. They could even create their own petition opposing it if they so chose.
Okay, thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Yes, Ms. Ainsworth, do you know if Sunland Park Planning and Zoning approves this annexation?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Reynolds, I, I don't have that information for sure, but I know that it is going to their council. So I believe a recommendation has already been made.
Okay, because as, as you all know, sometimes our constituents are watching and have comments that they make in the meeting. And someone just alerted me to the possibility that the Planning and Zoning Commission in Sunland Park actually denied this annexation or didn't approve it anyway. I, is there a way we can find that out?
See if Albert. I sent a message to Albert, and hopefully he'll respond shortly.
Okay, now, and assuming that they did, if their Planning and Zoning Commission for Sunland Park did not approve the annexation, then would that stop the process regardless of what we do?
If, let me just go back to what Albert said. They, Sunland Park has a, they are considering a zone change application that is contingent on annexation being approved. And so it sounds like they have a zone change that they were processing in conjunction with the annexation. So today, the, the comments that may be provided by this body would be additional information for their council to consider. And so they, they can move forward with consideration of the comments. They could ignore the comments. It's, it's gonna, really gonna be up to that, that body, the Sunland Park's council, how they want to move forward.
And then, just really quickly, Commissioner Reynolds, to answer that question, I think a board can take up an annexation without the PNC's approval. Whether or not they vote it down, I think the, the city council could do so.
And do we know what the Municipal Boundary Commission recommended?
The Municipal Boundary Commission?
Yes, for an annexation, the Municipal Boundary Commission of the state has to approve it.
No, I, I do not have that information.
Do you know if that process is already done, or if that's something that happens?
No, typically, once you have the annex, once, once the annexation has been approved, then it is sent to the state. So you wouldn't necessarily have those comments in advance of the annexation.
Okay. I, I've been through a couple of these over the last few years with Sunland Park, and they're never easy. It's never common sense to just say yes or no. I wish we, I wish we had more information about this.
Okay. And then just a comment, and literally it's a just educated guess. The reason why the, to the City of Sunland Park, it's the island, to the county commission, that is the donut, was not originally in this annexation plan is because the annexation plan includes a TID and a PID. Is that correct, Ms. Singsworth?
Mr. Chair, yes. According to the information that they provided, the applicant is planning to pursue both a PID and a TID with Sunland Park if the annexation is approved.
Okay. So they're probably not going to put an existing subdivision into that annexation plan because you can't, can you do a TID and a PID on a current subdivision?
You can, however, you would want to have support from those existing property owners. And just to clarify, the, the petition by the applicants, they would be proceeding with, with the development of their area. And so if they wanted to, to move forward with a PID and a TID, they wouldn't necessarily have to include any additional areas that Sunland Park might want to annex in addition to. They would be pursuing only the areas that they have applied for.
Got you, thank you.
You know, the, the interesting thing about the annexation, state, state statute is that it, the people in that little area that we want them to annex could all say no. And the majority property owner could say yes, and it would be difficult to stop it. And that's, I think that's something our state legislature needs to look at and revisit the annexation statute and try to make it more fair to the residents that actually are affected, as opposed to just the landowners. But at this, at this point in time, the state statute simply says that the majority landowner, if it's one person, can actually make this annexation happen without anybody else's input or approval. However, I think there may be some other information the public would like to present that might have us look at this a different way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, anything else, Commissioners? Any direction that we want to take this?
I think we should get public comment.
Okay. Any public comment?
Good afternoon, I guess, right?
It is, sir, yes, good afternoon.
Yes, my name is Christopher Lyons, and I am, I do own 54, 55 acres within this area that's proposed to be annexed. I have, you know, I sent a letter to the mayor and to the city manager back in early July when I heard that they were thinking about rushing this annexation through. And I said, the stated position to date from the City of Sunland Park is they will not annex any land that does not want to be annexed, petition to be annexed into their city. So, and, and I told them, for, for now, I do not want to be in the City of Sunland Park. Not, I, I will not say ever, but, but based on what I've seen developed within the City of Sunland Park, the way I think the city has been administered, and the fact that they have over a thousand acres of undeveloped land within their city limits, that let's, let's, let's do a good job within your city limits, and people will want to be annexed by you. To Commissioner Gameraos's point, why don't those residents want to be part of Sunland Park? So that, that's, that's a good question. So if the city is run properly, they, they show a vision for what the city's going to look like. They can point to actual development that, that you'd say that's quality, high-quality development, not substandard, that people want to be part of that. This annexation, there's a, there's about a thousand homes that are supposed to go in. They have to get access from Pete Dominici Highway on the hill. So this is an overweight, oversized highway. And you have trucks coming up and down a hill. Why would you want to stop them for residents to, and this is a, to an international port crossing into our industrial areas? So I think there has to be a lot more thinking about what this plan, what they intend to do here, how it's going to impact Pete Dominici Highway and the industrial area, how it's going to impact the port. And they also are annexing or putting in the annex area, annexated area, the state highway, Pete Dominici Highway, which means they can now jump over to the Love's Truck Stop and start annexing other commercial areas that are in, right now in the county. Now, CRUA also is, is trying to divide, excuse me, is trying to divide the CRUA territory from the Mesa, which is for the county, and down below.
Thank you, sir.
Derek Chaco, for the record. I'm asking you to deny or postpone the Rancho Santa Teresa annexation because this project directly conflicts with the region's ongoing struggle with arsenic-contaminated groundwater and proposed desalination plant that is being discussed as a so-called solution. Both issues are connected, and both prove that adding new residential growth here is not sustainable. The Mesia Valley Bolson Aquifer, which supplies water to Santa Teresa and Sunland Park, already contains arsenic levels that exceed federal safety limits, currently, right now, today. That contamination is the main reason the county and the state are now exploring a $25 million desalinization project in the Santa Teresa Industrial Park. But DSal is not a fix. It is an emergency response to a water source that's already failing. DSal does not create new water. It simply concentrates the arsenic and other contaminants into a toxic brine waste stream. The region still has no approved compliant disposal site for that brine, meaning every gallon treated could produce a gallon of hazardous waste that must go somewhere. To approve the Rancho Santa Teresa now would mean adding hundreds, actually, it's thousands, a thousand new homes, more, sorry, let me repeat that. To approve Rancho Santa Teresa now would mean adding hundreds of new homes, more wells, and more domestic water demand to an aquifer that is already overpumped and chemically compromised. The more we draw from it, the higher the arsenic concentration becomes, and the more pressure we put on an unproven DSal plant that isn't even funded or engineered yet. This is not sustainable planning. It's dangerous feedback loop. Contaminated water triggers expensive treatment. Treatment produces toxic waste. More growth demands even more water, and the cycle repeats until the aquifer is exhausted or poisoned. Until the county can prove a safe, long-term supply of arsenic-free water and a legal method to dispose of DSal brine, approving new residential annexations like Rancho Santa Teresa would be reckless. Please, for public health and for long-term sustainability, vote to deny or table this annexation until the water problem is solved. Also, this relates to the DSal conversation about to come up. I want you to personally research other DSal projects, including El Paso and in Texas, to see how those numbers have ballooned way past initial projections and how some of those sites are non-operable right now. Thank you.
Any other public comment on the Sunland Park annexation item? Okay, seeing none. Commission?
Yeah, I have, like, I like one more comment. And, you know, and I wish it were that simple for us to just deny this. The fact is, we can't deny it. All we can do is give them an opinion. And they, the state allows them to take action independent of our opinion, which is what they've done for years. Again, going back to state statute, state statute needs to give the county and surrounding communities a little more authority to act on a process like this. But right now, the state statute simply says we have an opinion, but it really doesn't count. And that's my, that's my biggest concern. So in my opinion, and part of the reason I wanted to table this, if we had time, is the only action we possibly can take is to actually file an injunction against this annexation and try to make it go to court. And if we don't, then I think this will happen regardless of what we vote today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Gameraos.
So also, I, I had forgotten to say that one of the reasons the people that don't want to be annexed is because, you know, Sunland Park has a higher tax rate than the county. And so a lot of people don't want to see that, you know, raise up. My question is, like, I saw that PID and the TID, and it's going to be on that community. You know, so can you explain what the TID and the PID are? So that way, those who, if this were to go through, if Sunland Park decides to still move through with it, what the community, what people that buy these properties, what they're going to be looking at?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gameraos, a PID is a public improvement district. And so it would be an additional tax levy that would provide funds for infrastructure for that subject property, subject area. And that could include basic infrastructure like roads and utilities, but it could also include amenities like parks and recreation centers. It's really up to the applicant how they want to structure that development and what they would include in the PID. The TID is a similar mechanism, which would capture increase in tax. So they would take the base appraisals for, for the tax, and any additional increment as property values increase, that would be captured in a fund as well. And so that additional revenue would be used also for infrastructure in that, on those subject properties. And so the TID doesn't actually increase or add any additional tax other than what would be increased due to property value, but the PID would add an additional tax levy. And those are typically 20 to 30 years, where that additional tax would be included on those properties.
So with that said, these individuals that would buy these properties, they would be paying more, right? So living in Sunland, City of Sunland Park, they would already have a higher tax rate on there, and then they would have to pay more for this. And who has control of that PID and TID? And who decides where it's going to go?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gameraos, so for the PID, they would have to create a board. Typically, that board would be composed of people that are appointed by the, the Sunland Park's council. And those people would be making decisions based on an approved development plan of how that money would be used toward what projects and the timing and prioritization of those projects. And the TID as well, similarly, would have to have a board that would be designated to make decisions on how funding would be used. And so if they do move forward with those two mechanisms, they would both go through a public hearing process. A TID has an additional approval process that goes to the state. And so it's actually more challenging to approve a TID because there's also state approvals involved. But both of those processes require the developer to have a very structured plan with projects that are already identified with cost estimates and preliminary prioritization, so that when approvals are being made, it's very clear what will be included, how much the additional tax levy will be, and how those projects are going to be prioritized, and how the boards will also be composed.
So, and most likely, I mean, just from what I'm hearing, the, the homes that are being built up there, you know, you have HOAs, correct? And most likely, this subdivision would have HOAs?
I don't have that information. But given that it is a master plan community, I think it's likely that those would be considered.
So these houses would be considered high-end homes?
You know, the information that, that was provided doesn't really clarify whether or not, you know, what, what income levels, but it does sound like there would be a lot, a mix of housing types. So there would probably be a range of, of housing prices as well.
Okay, thank you for that information. I appreciate it, because I needed to learn that as well. I would hear PID and TIDs, but, you know, since I really don't hear it very often, I, I, thank you for the refresher. The other thing on this map here, it shows like there's a, well, it says that wherever they would take control or they have right now, it's on one side of Pete Dominici and then the other side. So they should be, yeah, that yellow portion?
This one?
No, the other one where, where Pete Dominici is, yes, right in between there. So they wouldn't be annexing that? Because that, that shows that their property's on that one side and then the other, right?
Right, so they would be, this is, this is probably a better depiction. So you can see here in the aerial, they, they are, the, the request is within these areas, the darker areas, but they, they are including portions of Pete Dominici, as you can see here on their survey map. So the only portion of Pete Dominici that they would not include is this corner right here that is within the county's property. That part was excluded, but they would be including, if everything moves forward, Pete Dominici as well, which would remain under maintenance by NMDOT, but it would be within Sunland Park's jurisdiction if it is approved.
Thank you. And then my other, because I am on the CRUA board, and I know our executive director is one who's been proving all these, how do you say it, residential or commercial, and he decides whether they can fulfill that or not. You know, it just seems like we do keep hearing about the water issue, and then we still have more development coming in, and more development coming in. Was this development going to provide water and wastewater? Were they going to develop that themselves? Or is that, is CRUA going to be the one? And I'm asking this, even though I'm on the board, you would think I would know. But, you know, our meeting was canceled this month, and so we really don't get really good information. You know, I'm having to learn through sitting on the board here about what CRUA is doing. So I'm sorry if I'm asking you that question, and you may not know it.
That's fine. Mr. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gameraos, the process for development in Sunland Park is very similar to the development process in, in the county, where developers would have to provide information on how those utilities would be provided. And so if they are planning to pursue water and wastewater through CRUA, then they would have to have agreements with CRUA. If CRUA cannot provide the, the water and wastewater that they need, then they would have to have some kind of agreement or proposal for the developer to, to provide financing for the cost of any additional infrastructure. for the cost of any additional infrastructure that might be needed. So CREU would not necessarily be on the hook for providing that additional infrastructure. If it's infrastructure that's needed only to serve that particular development, then the developer would be responsible for providing that funding. And so that may be part of the reason why they want to pursue a PID and a TID is because wastewater, water and wastewater may be an issue. But if there, if there's plans to expand already, if there's additional infrastructure that CREU is already planning, and it could serve this community, then that would be up to CREU whether or not they want to provide that additional utility to that area. And that would be an agreement between the developer and CREU.
So really quickly, in the packet, it actually says that the utility infrastructure is CREU.
Right.
Yeah, and it also says that CREU, after due and careful consideration, has concluded that the development on the terms and conditions is in the best interest of CREU. So they, they signed off on it, and they said that they're going to serve us.
Yes. I did see that they signed off on that. Thank you.
Yeah, you got it. I was like, I see this.
Yes. I just wondered, you know, if they just had, if they were going to have the developers, you know, put in some money for the infrastructure, for the wastewater and water. And so, I don't know. I, I just kind of feel with the information that we're getting here, or, I don't know. I'd like, like the rest of the board is commenting, I don't know if their board is going to listen to what the recommendations or our concerns or comments are. I really think that they really need to look into this. I, I just kind of feel like they're going to put residential out there. The further and further we go out with residential, like for me, being in the county board, I don't want to see more residential out there going towards the airport. Yes, we don't have flying planes like all the time, but it's going to get to a point where they're, bless you, where they're going to have those cargo planes, and then the noise from that as well, flying over people's houses. You know, we're having that issue with the shooting, you know, the, the property up there with the shooting. They're going to be encroaching on that as well. I, I don't know. I just, I do have an issue with just having dwellings moving out towards and near the industrial area. I just feel industrial area should be industrial area. And the more that we start having houses encroach on that, well, then that's where we're going to have the issues with residents. Residents, you know, they will move in wherever they can move in. So you know, that's my problem with this development. I do wish, like Mr. Lyons was said, if Sunland Park has other land, maybe where they can build this, and I know these developers within these areas want to develop that, but you know, I just kind of see more and more housing going up there, and I don't know how Sunland Park is going to move forward with their water and wastewater, you know, if they're, if they keep allowing more and more and more, if they haven't even handled the issue yet with the lack of it, with the lack of the water, you know, and wastewater. So that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Now that we have the map up, I just want, just for clarity, I just, looking at the lower left-hand side, that is, I believe, the 54 acres that belongs, or at least represented by Mr. Lyons in the petition. Is that?
This portion right here?
I think that's what we were just, that was pointed out by Mr. Lyons. Just that, I think, the reason I bring it up is because I think, as it was suggested, you know, with, with the request, I think we have the property owner that's requesting to not be annexed, but they're continuing to do it with, you know, what, what intentions. You know, and I think that's also, you know, on top of the other issue, I think in, in my mind, I would, if we're considering this, I would look, if we're going to consider a letter, I think we, we look to, to be against or, or push against this with the additional condition that they remove that property at the request of the owner. But I, I don't know. I don't know what the rest of the, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but it just seems like the city of Sunland Park is, is doing as, as they, as they see fit for themselves and not listening to the public.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Commissioner Sanchez.
Anything else that we want to add to this letter? Looks like that's one of them. I think the concerns about Pete Dominici Highway should be included in the letter as a concern that the commission, the commission has about the future of that roadway. And just, I know that NMDOT has said that they will continue maintenance, which is But if we can reword the letter to put in those concerns and that suggestion, anything else that we want to add to the letter?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make one other comment, and then is I think that just the fact that they're doing this annexation with 1,000 acres still left to develop and moving into areas that we have already identified as industrial park areas we'd like to develop, as Commissioner Gamaros has said, I think all we're really doing is just handing them the mash to blow all this up. I think it's a real mistake, but I know we have no authority to stop it. But their, their history has proven that they're incapable of properly developing that area and maintaining that area, and CREU is a good example. Their board, that area, it's, it's a problem, the developments down there, they're, they still have problems with those, a problem with the water. And it's, this, this is going to actually make a problem. And I wish we had more authority to do something about it. That's all. And I would like to give Mr. Lyons the opportunity to withdraw his property from the annexation if that's, there's a way we can do it.
Okay. Good comments. Can we form that into a letter, Ms. Amesworth?
Yes. And just to clarify, the, the letter is, it's currently written, of course, as recommending approval, with the condition that they include that portion of the residential area that's currently in a donut hole. Would the commission like to keep that condition or have that condition removed?
I'm seeing a no.
Okay. So we can remove that condition, and we would be adding the condition that any property owners that are opposed be removed from the annexation. And a comment regarding areas that have been designated for industrial development within the county's unincorporated area. And you made a comment, Commissioner Reynolds, regarding the future of Pete Dominici. Specifically, what is the, the comment to be included?
You know, Pete Dominici is a critical vein for our development of the industrial revenue park. And if it's, if its state still maintains it, and it's in the city, I think the city will have some say-so over whether or not Pete Dominici is expanded.
Okay.
And properly able to handle the traffic. But I think is, I think that's a problem if they don't support what we're trying to accomplish, industrial park, by expanding the highway.
Okay.
And I think that's, we're putting our future as a county and the future of what we're planning in that park at risk. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments to add?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just rather quickly.
Vice Chair.
I'm suggesting, my suggestion is that instead of naming any specific property owner, as has been suggested before, just to include any property owner, as you suggested, Ms. Amesworth, that would not like to be incorporated to the city. I mean, because if we start naming property owners, I'm sure there's hundreds. And to just frame it around one property owner, I don't think that would be appropriate. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Do you need more direction, or are we good?
I think we have everything we need.
Okay. Do we need to technically vote on anything, or with?
Yes.
Yeah, suggested. Okay. And do we need, I guess, do we need amended, or just, I think we've given, I think we've all given input here to what the letter should say. I don't know if.
Yes.
If it's at all proper, we can just approve?
So the motion was to give comment for the annexation, and I think that's what we just did, so I think the motion is still good.
Okay.
So Brandy, go ahead with the motion, or with the vote, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Gamaros?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
No.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapado?
Yes.
Chair Shal George Hernandez?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Amesworth. Okay, next up, we do have the approval of a resolution to adopt the policy for naming and renaming county facilities and properties. Commission, do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sanchez, and I will go ahead and second that. And welcome, Mr. Herrera.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. The item before you is a document that will guide on how to name county future and present county facilities in a strategic and organized fashion. We have several properties that are coming online through construction and acquisition, and we have had several requests to name these properties, so that's why, is the purpose of this document. At this time, I will entertain any questions.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Herrera?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was trying to pull up the, the procedure, and, because I did have one question, and I think it was on the guidelines to name the, to name the building. I think it was limited to, or suggested in there to limit to three words in the name. I think well, it said like a name would be considered.
The complete name proposed must have no more than three words, where a person's full name shall be considered one word.
Yep. I don't know at all if it's at all possible for, if we, if we change that, if there was a specific reason why three versus maybe four, or if there's any concerns if we increase it to four words.
Yes, Chair, Commissioner Sanchez, we were just trying to limit the amount of space so we don't end up with a sentence for it. I mean, it could probably be like the Emmanuel Sanchez Ball Field, or, you know, Community Park, but if we, if we extend it to there. And it's also falls in line with best practices of other organizations that have similar policies and procedures.
So you're, you're saying that we couldn't do, Commissioner Sanchez is amazing and awesome, ball field.
You know.
For good sports and stuff?
Yeah, for sport, for kids that can read good, for kids to read good.
I was waiting for it.
Sorry. Yeah, I, I just didn't know. I, I understand, and I, I was just gonna, I think that was my only question, and I was gonna make, see if there were any concerns if we increased it to four, four words versus three.
Chair, Mr. Sanchez, we can definitely let the leadership know, if that's your recommendation, but, or we can amend the language to kind of give a little bit of latitude, depending on the circumstance.
Yeah, we can change that. I have no issue with that.
I'd just do it as a quick amendment, or, or proposed amendment?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to amend the, the procedure for, for item, sorry, under Section 4A1, to be updated, to have, to change from no more than three words to no more than four words.
Second.
Comments? Questions? Comments? Public comment?
I, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Of course, Dr. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. I will try to be as succinct as possible. I know we're heading into the afternoon. I do have a comment specific to the new build that we will have, that is completed and we are moving into. In 2020, I became clerk, I noticed a need for a new warehouse. We were paying rent for, had for many, many years, and advocated for, and with the support of the commission, including Commissioner Sanchez and the county manager at the time, who was here for Fernando Macias, we moved forward on trying to obtain those monies from the legislature in a capital outlay project. And Senator Steinborn is here as well, and he was supportive of that, including helping fund it. And so over the course of two sessions, I advocated for and lobbied for specifically more than $3 million for a new build, so our office would not, and our county would not have to continue to pay that rent, and was very successful. It was very hard, and my heart and soul was in it, because I knew that our community deserved one. And I was very pleased with the commission, because they shored up the rest of the amount we needed, which was, I believe, $900,000. And we have, it, the building is being currently, it's open, and we will have a grand opening. During that process, the original completion date was hopeful for August, and we had counted on that date. And I understand things change, and this, this is not a complaint about that, please be clear. I know that you all worked very hard, and I'm very appreciative. But during that process, we contemplated many names, and in fact, had our staff, even some of our election officials, participate in the naming process and voting, right? Because we're, we're a democracy, so we voted on and decided on the name of Preserving History and Democracy Headquarters. And I thought it perfectly captured what our office does, and statutorily, right? We uphold democracy, and we also are the historians of our community. And so my specific request is because this predated any of these introductions of these, is that that name be honored moving forward. So, thank you.
Preserving what now?
Preserving History and Democracy Headquarters.
Headquarters. Just had to go.
They voted. This was the, this was the will of the voters.
Okay. Clerk's office. We love it.
Thank you.
Any follow-up? That is five words, though, Commissioner Sanchez.
I, if it's an ampersand, I thought that might.
Okay. We're going to go with it. Mostly because I don't want to make another motion, so.
PHD HQ.
All right. Any other comments? Okay. Can we do HQ instead of headquarters? It shortens it up a little bit. HQ. Brandy, go ahead.
Commissioner Gamaros?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapado?
Yes.
Chair Shal George Hernandez?
Yes. Motion carries on the amendment. Now we have the motion as amended. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none? Public comment? Seeing none? Brandy?
Commissioner Gamaros?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapado?
Yes.
Chair Shal George Hernandez?
Yes. Motion carries. Resolution number, Brandy?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next up is item. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Robert. Next up is item number 29, which is to award a sole source contract to Mavida Alliance, Economic Development Alliance for Economic Development Services, and the amount not to exceed $300,000. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. You have a presentation on this?
I am just going to show the slide of the new metrics that we added.
Oh, okay.
Since they're all familiar with who Mavida is. So one of the new metrics that we added, Devin previously mentioned in his presentation about the site readiness, so he's going to be providing the support data needs for SB 169.
Cool.
And in addition to that, we'll do a work session. The topic will be determined between Doñana County and Mavida.
Easy.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Short and sweet. Commissioners, any comments or questions on this? Seeing none? Public comment on this? Sure, come on up.
Thank you, Commission. My name is Joshua Roscoe with the Border Industrial Association. We stand in support of Mavida. They're a longtime partner of us. A lot of the success we're seeing in the southern part of the county would not be possible without them, so we urge you to continue to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Want any other? Sure, come on up.
My name is Miriam Baka Kerkowski from Techmat Transportation Services, and I've been on the board of Mavida, and what they do is really great. They welcome companies that are coming and interested. They welcome companies that are coming and interested in staying in the area, and they provide with data of housing, schools, industrial areas, and all the information that is needed firsthand. And I've known that the funds that are asked today are gonna be well-used. That's my contribution. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Any other? Seeing none? Brandy, go ahead and roll call vote the Commission, please.
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapada?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan on this.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Mavida. Next up, we do have three, four hearing and ordinance items today. By any chance, Ms. Neal or Madam Clerk, can we do item 30 and 31 together? Or is it better just to do them separate? Separate? Okay. That's fine. Okay, so the first up is item number 30, which is a hearing on transfer of ownership of a dispenser liquor license for Circle K Incorporated. And we do have our Madam Clerk here today, who I am going to swear on right now, if you'll raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair Commission, I'm here to request approval of a transfer of ownership for a liquor license for Circle, for Circle K. The license will be used, will be used at 1120 Vado Drive in Vado. We have received no protests, no public comment, and no feedback from the community on this, and have no objections.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any Commission comment on this one? Any public comment on this?
Nope.
Seeing... Did you have public comments, sir? Okay, if you do, can you please join us at the mic, please, so you can state your name for the record?
Good. Feel free.
My name is Mark Rhodes.
Okay, sir, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
I represent Pickwick. Pickwick is the seller in item number 30, and they are the transfer of a location, item 31. My only comment is not, the clerk is doing an excellent job. I've been doing this forever. I've represented Mr. Andrade from Pickwick for 30 years. I know the transfers, both in terms of me being the one who transferred them the first time, and also the transactions here. I drafted the contracts. I've done the state work with regard to the transfer. Obviously, I didn't do it with regard to Circle K, because they're the moving party on their application. All I'm really here is to answer any questions as to why it's happening, or any procedural questions you might have in terms of the logistics of the transfer.
Thank you, sir.
If you have none, then I will sit down, and you'll have the shortest argument by an attorney you've ever seen.
We will always welcome that. Commissioners, any questions? Sir, we're good.
Thank you very much.
This is pretty straightforward. Thank you.
I appreciate the courtesy, and your staff, as usual, has been exceptional with us.
Thank you. Okay, Brandy, if you can please roll call the Commission on, oh, we need a motion, actually.
I'll move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Chapada. We have a second from Commissioner Sanchez for approval of the transfer of ownership. With that being said, Brandy, go ahead.
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapada?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan on this.
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we have item number 31. Hearing on a transfer state, a transfer of a location only of dispenser liquor license for Pickwick. Do you swear to tell the whole truth?
I do.
Okay.
Mr. Chair Commission, based on pursuant to NMSA 60-6B-4, again, I am requesting approval of a transfer of the location only of a dispenser license, and this is for Pickwick. We've received no public comment, no feedback, and no protests from the community, and we have no objection.
Wonderful. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any comments, questions, or concerns for Madam Clerk? Seeing none? Any public comment today? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second by Vice Chair. Brandy, go ahead.
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapada?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan on this.
Yes. Motion carries. Transfer is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for hanging out with us for several hours. It is. It's always an experience here. Okay, next up, we do have item number 32, which is to approve Red Chili, oh, do I have to say all this? Do we, to approve Red Chili's A LLC Delaware Limited Liability Company, Red Chili's B LLC Delaware Limited Liability Company, Red Chili's C LLC Delaware Limited Liability Company, Red Chili's D LLC, a limited live, Delaware Limited Liability Company, collectively and together with their successors, Signs and Affiliates, Red Chili's and Yucca Growth Infrastructure LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, together with its successors, Signs and Affiliates, Yucca Growth, and together with Red Chili's, the Companies Economic Development Act, LITA Project Ordinance.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion approval by Commissioner Sanchez.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Reynolds. We do have our Economic Development Administrator, Ms. Carter here. We also have Chris Meehardt, our bond attorney here. Welcome to both of you. Thank you for hanging out for a few hours.
Thank you. I will let Chris speak first.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The ordinance in front of you is similar to what you did a couple of weeks ago, which is the Local Economic Development Act ordinance related to Project Jupiter. This one, just in terms of timing, moved along a little slower. This relates to a different permit, building permit fee structure for these particular IRB developments that are planned. And as you see in the ordinance, Section 2, it lays out a set fee over a four-year period totaling $4.5 million for the different building permit fee structure. The ordinance also approves the project participation agreement in form, although it is completed, related to that project. I would point out, just to be clear, there is one thing I would like to remove. If you go to page 2, the fourth recital is just inapplicable. That was, that was a provision that applies in certain types of LITA transactions. It doesn't apply in this one, so I would request that there be a floor amendment to strike recital 4. That relates to actual expenditure of county monies, and that's not the situation here. This is similar to what you did two weeks ago with the gross receipts tax revenues being produced, provided to the companies. Happy to answer any questions about it. It is pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act, and the project participation is, agreement is consistent with the forms you would see.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Yes, item number 4.
Oh, yeah, so I'm sorry, Commissioner, Mr. Chair Commissioner Reynolds, it's on page 2, the fourth recital down, whereas the total amount, that particular provision, that applies if the county's actually expending money.
So, we're on a weed.
Are we talking on the ordinance or the?
Oh, the ordinance. I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. I'm looking at the fourth item down in mine.
It's servability on ours.
Whereas on September 22, 2009, ordinance, is that what you're talking about? It's on our page 1150.
No, you're gonna go down 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 more recitals.
Okay, so now you're talking about whereas the total amount of the building permit fees reduced in the fiscal year in which the company has paid the building fees.
Yeah, that's inapplicable.
That item should be struck?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioners, do we want to entertain that motion? Or that amendment?
Okay, wow. I don't know how to do that. The only thing we can, I can say is to make a motion to amend it, to remove the paragraph that says, whereas the total amount of the building permit fees reduced in each fiscal year in which the company's paid building permit fees for the project pursuant to the act does not and will not exceed 10% of the general fund expenditures of the county in such fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Or your amendment?
It's amended motion.
Okay. So amended motion by Commissioner Reynolds to strike out whereas the total amount of building permit fees, that section. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Reynolds, a second. Oh. Oh, my gosh, I didn't even see that. You were gone. Oh, my God, I'm totally gonna have to, okay, are you ready?
I'm back.
Okay. So, Brandy, on page 1151, which is under the Doñana County Ordinance Number 2.
The fourth whereas?
Yeah. There is a whereas that says, whereas the total amount of building permit fees reduced in each fiscal year in which the company's paid building permit fees for the project pursuant to the act does not and will not exceed 10% of the general fund expenditures of the county in such fiscal year. And we are striking that out because it does not relate to this project, because the county is not putting forth any funds.
It's not expending money.
It's not expending money. So we are striking that out. It was moved, it was suggested, suggested by our bond counsel. It was moved by Commissioner Reynolds, and it was seconded by Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are caught up. Okay. So with that being said, is there any discussion on the removal of that whereas, Commissioners? Is there any public comment from removing that whereas? Okay, Brandy, if you can roll call us on the amendment.
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapada?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan on this.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, and I would thank you, Commissioner Chair. Now, as to the ordinance as a whole, I'm happy to discuss and answer any questions, as is Ms. Carter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Meehardt. Okay, Commissioners, with that being said, we do now have an amended motion that we are going to be the amended motion that we're going to be looking at tonight, this afternoon. Commissioners, any comments, questions, or concerns to Ms. Carter or Mr. Meehardt?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Reynolds.
Just for the benefit of the public, I'd like to point out that the attachment of this, the appendix, I guess, there's attachment, actually does talk about clawbacks. It also requires that 750 people be hired, all the things that we were requested by the public to make sure that we were put into the document. So as an attachment to this document, this actually does become something that we can enforce.
Yes, Mr. Chair Commissioner Reynolds, it's an enforceable agreement.
And the clawbacks are also defined on page 1157 of this document as well. And so it's all pretty clear. And we can hold them accountable for all that.
Yes, Mr..
Okay, thank you.
And then it also, to go along with that as well, it does have the reporting, which is quarterly on or before each January 31, April 30, July 31, and November 31, until January 31, 2026. So we will be getting those reportings to make sure that the obligations of this agreement are being made. So I want to thank you for doing this quarterly and adding that in there. I know that was big for us. Anything else, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, it's not so much a question, but a couple of comments.
Yeah, of course.
Before we open for public input, but I know, as we said with the quarterly reports, and I know I've already made this request of county management is I know we've had a lot of discussion over the past few weeks about IRBs, LITA, and so on, and while we've had quite a few, especially LITA in the past, LITA resolutions that have been approved in the past, there really hasn't been a lot of discussion on reporting requirements, and people wanted to see these reports. But obviously, with this project, there's been a lot of information and requested from, from the public, and so what I was hoping we would be able to do as a county and the department, and I know you're, we're building up the Economic Development Department, and appreciate all of your efforts and with, with you and Lucy and the rest of the team to, to work on building that up. My hope is, is that maybe, it might be an opportunity for us to take a look at all of the existing IRBs that we have, maybe even LITA documents, and maybe create a webpage or a repository where the public can come and see the documents that were approved, as well as, and that may be a little challenging. I don't know how far back we'll have to go for those. But if we might be able to share those, and then any subsequent reports that come in, just because I know there'll be a lot of questions that will be coming in, and if we can proactively provide that to the public so that we can share that information with them, I think it'll go a long way to building that, that trust as to, you know, what's being reported, are they meeting the requirements? And are we holding them accountable to these, to these commitments?
Yes, Commissioner Sanchez, thank you. That request actually was sent my way. Lucy and I are working on a dashboard that's gonna be featured on the Economic Development sub-page. I already have a list started of all of the IRBs that have been approved in the last couple of years. So now it's just a matter of gathering all of the executed documents so that they can be attached to each and every one of those records, so that our constituents have the transparency that they've been requesting and the ability to download those documents.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And like I said, I just think, like, I think for us, this is an opportunity for us to, to continue to improve and do more. I think we've seen a lot with our website and trying to use that more, and I think this is an opportunity for us to see how this goes, and if there's opportunities for us to continue to improve, I'm open to that. And then to to our friends with, on, on Project Jupiter and Borderplex Digital, I'd ask, I know this is not a requirement in the LITA documents, but I know there's a lot of discussion, particularly now around the power generation for that, for the facility. And so, what I'd ask is, you know, I think is, is you continue, as we continue on with the permitting processes, if you're able to share that with the public somehow, so that way people have some visibility to that. I know there was discussion specifically about during the information sessions for use of solar as part of this, and eventually with commitments within the lease documents that, that you'll be compliant with the ETA. You know, I think if you're able to share that, I think, I think hopefully that might answer a lot of questions as to, you know, where, where the power will be coming from and where we're doing that. And I think as we see this as an opportunity, as I think as we've mentioned, potentially for the jobs, the economic growth for this community. Like I said, to me, I'm hoping we can continue with that transparency so that the public can see what we're doing, what you all are working on, and, you know, if we're, if we're meeting those commitments. So I just appreciate, you know, if you can take that feedback for what it's worth, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And with that being said as well, I think it's really important to highlight the prevailing wage portion that the Legislature passed last year that tied in with IRBs as well as with the LITA, with the job portion. I think that's awesome that we're able to do that as a community. So, anything else, Commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner Reynolds.
Yeah, on page 1157, too, the reporting, I think it's important to public understands that the reporting, they're required to provide us with quarterly reports before each January 31, April 30, July 30, November 30, and January 31, about their progress. And in addition to that, the, they're gonna provide us with the economic data sheet as well that shows the impact of their activity and presence in Doñana County. And I'm looking forward to seeing that, so we can actually provide that for the public as well. Thank you.
Cool. Anything else, Commissioners? Okay. Thank you to you two. We're gonna open it up for a public comment. Any public comment on the LITA ordinance today? Okay, welcome.
Afternoon. Jim Hurst. I just wanted to thank you for your actions on Jupiter thus far. After the January, the September 22 meeting, there was, during the September 22 meeting, there was a demonstration here, and there was chanting about, one of the chants was, "This is what democracy looks like." And that's one part of the demonstration that I agree with. This is what democracy looks like. A few people are elected to make big decisions for this county. A few people are elected to make big decisions for this county. You're the few. You take the time, you take the interest, you devote your lives to figuring out the best course for this county. You decide questions like, should we build the world's largest data center in our county? All the environmental challenges, all those challenges, and so many different points of view to consider. And you considered them. You listened patiently to hours of public testimony, public comment. All the emotions, all the ignorance that was part of the formula. Unfortunately, most constituents aren't as informed as they think they are. And you waded through all that. And I agree with your decision, but most of all, I applaud you for making it. It would have been much easier to push it down the road and perhaps to not made it at all. Let the buyer make the decision. But you courageously made a decision that many people took exception to. And I just want to applaud that, and thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commission, good to be with you. It's been a while. State Senator Jeff Steinborn, nice to meet you, Commissioner Managers. So I'm here to talk about Project Jupiter and this ordinance. I wasn't able to attend your last meeting because I was traveling during the public meetings, and then unfortunately I came home with COVID, so I didn't want to get anybody here sick. So, you know, on behalf of colleagues of mine, we sent you all a letter with serious concerns that we still have, which we haven't heard back from, regarding, I think, really important issues. I'm going to address one very serious one, which is power generation. I think the problem with the compressed timeframe is when you move fast, you get a few things wrong, and you miss some big items. And I think the biggest item is power generation, which should be issue number one when you hear the word data center, everything related to power generation. This plant is going to start at a hundred percent natural gas. It's going to use and emit more CO2 emissions or close to it than all PNM combined. Facebook, which we like to hold up as an example, uses a hundred percent of their energy from renewable energy. And then they use baseload power on the grid connected to PNM as backup power. That has been the case since day one. We are starting off with a hundred percent natural gas, emitting millions of pounds of CO2 in this county, and we did not negotiate that. I don't know that we even had serious questions. I hear that we're having promises of a certain amount of solar. Is it defined? When's it coming online? You know, the whole ETA thing, honestly, is a smokescreen. ETA by 2045? This lease with Project Jupiter and Oracle will be done. It's a fifteen-year lease before 2445 even comes online. So I would say to you that while you will probably approve this today, my position is you should continue to negotiate. We need to get this right. We've missed an opportunity today. We might miss another, depends on your vote. I am all for economic development. I hear a lot about opportunity. Great. But getting the environmental part is super important. I know, generally speaking, this environment's a very important issue to many of you. It's very important to our constituents. So I just want to put that out there. We need to continue working on this issue, not through the permitting process. We had a public notification yesterday about an LLC already seeking an air permit. Okay, unless we work on this and we demand a little better environmental standards and that we try to achieve a hundred percent and then work backwards here for renewable energy, it can be done. We need to be creative, we need to work with Project Jupiter, which I'm committed to doing. But this is my number one issue. I still think we have rate exposure should the energy be sold onto the grid. And I don't know how that's enforceable, so I look forward to hearing that, and my time is up. But thank you, commissioners. I look forward to working with you to resolve these issues. Thank you.
Derek Pacheco for the record. I'm here to echo Senator Steinborn's concerns about LPG emissions and urge you not to reduce or waive development fees for the proposed data center project led by Yucca Growth Infrastructure and its web of Red Chili's and Green Chili Venture LLCs. This project is being marketed as high-tech and innovative, but behind that glossy language sits a familiar pattern, one I call the ATA smokescreen, the all-tech approach. It's the tactic of using futuristic buzzwords like AI, microgrids, and innovation just to justify special treatment, lighter regulations, and cheaper fees. But innovation is not an excuse to abandon fiscal or environmental responsibility. First, let's talk about the fees. Development fees are not arbitrary, they are the community's safeguard. They ensure that new, high-impact projects pay their fair share for the roads, utilities, emergency services, and water infrastructure they will depend on. Reducing or deferring these fees is essentially a public subsidy to a private company, and one that could easily turn into an escape clause if the project fails or stalls due to water shortages, market shifts, or stricter emission standards in the future. If this data center collapses under the weight of its own resource demands, whether it's because of limited water availability or new LPG emission restrictions, the county will have already spent on infrastructure we can't reuse, leaving the taxpayers holding the debt. That's not economic development, that's corporate risk being transferred to the public. Now, let's address the LPG issue that Senator Steinborn rightly warned us about. Despite claims of clean energy, the project plans include backup generation powered by LPG, a fossil fuel that releases carbon dioxide, nitrogen oxides, and particulates. This isn't zero emission tech, it's a step backward disguises progress. Calling this facility green while burning LPG is a contradiction, and the community should not be asked to underwrite it with fee reductions or tax breaks. If this developer truly believes in its sustainability claims and long-term stability, it should pay full freight like everyone else. No exceptions, no waivers, no special deals. That's how we protect our infrastructure, our taxpayers, and our air and water. So I urge you, uphold Senator Steinborn's call for transparency and LPG emissions, reject the ATA smokescreen, and most importantly, require the full payment of all development fees upfront in full and without deferral. Let's not finance another speculative project under the illusion of innovation. Let's make them prove it first with their own money, not ours.
Good afternoon, my name is Gabriel George. I'm with Tech and Transportation Services. I've worked in Santa Teresa now for over eight years. I'm all for Project Jupiter. I believe that this is going to bring a lot of growth to the area, to the industrial park that's been trying to grow. UP came in, it made a huge difference, it brought a lot of traffic, brought a lot of business. I deal with them daily, and I believe that Project Jupiter is a great thing for our community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Delilah, I'm a citizen from Las Cruces. I support Project Jupiter, represents more than just buildings, business plans and investments. It's about finding a seat of opportunity here so our children can grow strong roots where they were born. My youngest is only eight months, and like every parent, I dream of a future where my child, where my kids don't have to leave home to chase their dreams. I want them to have careers, not just jobs, that inspire them, challenge them, and give them pride in where they come from. With Project Jupiter, we are creating a place where families can build their futures together, a place where hard work leads to growth, where innovation meets community, where success doesn't require moving to a big city. We are not just investing in land or business, we are investing in our children's tomorrow, and together, we can make sure that tomorrow is bright right here at home.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission. My name's Jesus Octavio Carrasco. I'm a community leader from Esquite. I have over twenty years as a volunteer firefighter. I've seen everything, trust me. So your jobs are hard, thank you for what you do, you have a tough decision to do, but I want to share a couple of things with you. To me, it's important that we look at renewable, sustainable energy. Technology has changed, the technology's there. It's like the AI, it's there, trust me. So if we can look at maybe hydrogen, powering this with hydrogen, and I'm here in good faith. You guys know me, if you guys want to partner up, I can provide solutions to getting hydrogen. And then I heard this gentleman talk about desalination plant and how those minerals, you've got to get rid of them. I agree, but there's other solutions, there's filtration systems that you can capture those minerals, and some of them you can sell back to the market, and the ones that you can't, you sequester them. There's processes out there. So there's things that we can do together as good partners in good faith to benefit our community. And if you guys need any of that information, you guys have my number, I'm willing to work with you guys. So thank you for the opportunity, you guys have a tough decision, but I want to share that with you, that there's things that we can do to better the situation. Thank you.
My name is Megan Katrubis. I'm the owner of a cafe in Anthony, so stable utilities are vital. Rate risks from the microgrid worry me, I'm angry at potential subsidations frustrating my operations. Developers' assurance of impacts backed by independent operation and binding agreements, that's fiscal protection. Power and water plants, renewables minimize emissions, closed-loop systems conserve water. With fifty-six point nine million dollars in upgrades benefiting businesses like mine. I desire economic diversity, jobs booming demands for my services. This a hundred and sixty-five-dollar billion project delivers without environmental trade-offs. Let's formalize and approve. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Davin Lopez, President and CEO of the Mecia Valley Economic Development Alliance. I've been before you already before to talk about my board's support of this project and moving it forward. We still believe in it wholeheartedly. We still believe it is the biggest economic development opportunity that we have seen and maybe the state has ever seen in terms of capital investment, job creation, career opportunities, a new direction where we can advance possibilities in Santa Teresa and grow faster than what we've always wanted to for the past twenty years, quite frankly. So we appreciate all you've done to move this project forward, and we're here to work with you and the company as well to progress and identify the best workforce, the service providers, and really make this an opportunity for the residents and the businesses of Donaena County. So thank you for your support.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kenneth Provost. I'm a small business owner here in the community of Donaena County. My family and I have lived here for years, and I think this is good for our community. I think it's good for the economy of Donaena County, and I hope that you vote yes today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. Hello, everyone. I'm Logan Broom, a tech support guy here in Las Cruces. Dreaming of better jobs here instead of moving away. Sorry. I'm Logan Broom, a tech support guy here in Las Cruces, dreaming of better jobs here instead of moving away. Environmental fears held me back, power emissions, water waste, but frustrations with slow progress pushed me to speak. Project Jupiter's plan uses clean energy in its microgrid, cutting emissions and grid strain. Transparency on detail, proof of proof will satisfy my analytical side. Water might be a question. Closed-loop tech minimizes use with fifty-six point nine million improving county systems, a net positive in my opinion. Rates, no impact pledged, with agreements locking it in, protecting us is financially positive. Thank you for your time.
Good morning again, or good afternoon now, Commissioner Steve Watanias here again. I just want to say that I have absolutely no doubt that this commission is going to work diligently to look at every single possibility to really reduce, ultimately reduce the carbon footprint, for lack of a better term, that is going to come with Project Jupiter. I do know that there were, there was lots of information, there is a, there is a plan, not just a plan, a commitment to be carbon-free by, or to be net zero, excuse me, by 2045. That is a state requirement. That is what is agreed on by the state, and I have no, I have absolutely, I have absolute faith that stack infrastructure, that Borderplex, and that this commission is going to work towards that goal as long as you're in office. This has been, yeah, I was here in the last meeting as well. I saw how contentious it got, and, you know, I just want to commend all of you for holding it the way you did. That was a very, very tough decision that everybody had to make. And there's still a lot of work that's still, there's still a lot of work to do. So I have no doubt that we are going to all work together to work towards, you know, to work towards the goal of being as net zero, as close to net zero by 2045. I also, really, in reference to Senator Steinborn's concerns, this letter that was submitted that some of these other legislators signed on to, this was voted for at the state level. I can't go without bringing that to light, and it does confuse me. Maybe somebody can sit me down and explain to me how these legislators voted for the amendment that allowed this microgrid to move forward, and now this is a concern. My only suggestion is this is a result of some political backlash that's happening. And I get it, but we're all going to have to have our discussions with constituents and just move forward. So I do still stand in support of moving forward, developing responsibly in what the best interests of the residents in that part of the county. Thank you all very much.
You probably should have worn your hard hat for that.
I should have, yeah.
Good afternoon, Andrew Cosio. Transparency gaps in Project Jupiter's power plan angered me, fearing unchecked emissions and air quality decline. But commitments to renewable microgrids minimize risk with evaluations providing clarity. Water investments of fifty-six point nine million enhance resources, addressing scarcity. Rate protections through the bindings prevent burdens, this fosters desired innovation and jobs. I'm for Project Jupiter. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Joshua Rosco again with the Board Industrial Association. Stand in support of the lead project before you today, urge you to move forward with it. We are excited to welcome Project Jupiter to our region. We think the benefits will be enormous, not just for our region, not just for our county, but the state. We're excited to welcome to our community. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name's Ethan Linder. I actually own the hotel at Sunland Park Racetrack. I built it in 2015, probably one of the largest economic development projects in Sunland Park in the last decade. It recently just got purchased by one of the largest REITs the nation has ever seen. It closes tomorrow, technically. It shows you the importance of Donaena County and the fact that big money is looking to come here. I also want to tell you that I've been in this community for over ten years, I've got two little kids. But on a side note, I also am a partner in a major renewable energy company. That company works directly with New Mexico today. And the reason I bring this up is because as a business owner in New Mexico, in Sunland Park, the relationship we built in Riedoso with the Economic Development Division, with NMED, with MNERD, and their openness and desire to help us as a community in Riedoso post-fire, evolve and change and understand that technology changes quickly and how we are taking burned trees and turning them into energy to save our town. As a member of Sunland Park community in Donaena County, I fully support that technology and the support of the state will make this a successful operation because I've seen the technology and how it impacts Riedoso. And as a member of Sunland Park, I just encourage you to look at this in the bigger picture and understand that I know sometimes decisions are tough. We've got decisions just like this in West Virginia taking place today where we just approved renewable energy resources for a data center. Every community is going through what you're doing now, they're trying to balance the good and the bad. Understand that I've never seen an investment like this, and I've been all over the world. An investment like this dwarfs the two-hundred-million-dollar transaction that just happened at the racetrack. We're proud to be a part of the community, and I'm proud to tell you that I support it because I know- it because I know the technology behind the scenes that supports these institutions. It's as good as it's going to get and they only get smarter every day. So I'm just here to let you know, as a partner in the community and a person in the industry, they're good. They're the smartest people we've ever met and we look forward to working with them. We hope you support them and thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Commissioners, any follow-up comments, questions? Okay, seeing none. Brandy?
Commissioner Gómez dos?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chaparro?
No.
Chair Shaw Jordan on this?
Yes. Motion carries.
That does have an ordinance number?
Of course, go ahead. I'm sorry, Brandy.
That ordinance is 369-2025.
Thank you, Brandy. Moving on, we do have item number 33, which is condemnation, 1130 West Wicker. Oh, okay. Do you want to make a motion then?
Sure. I make a motion and we approve the condemnation of 1130 West Wicker and Chaparral.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Welcome, Ms. Eamesworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a property at 1130 West Wicker, which is in a severe dilapidated state. It was inspected formally by the Building Services Division on April 10th, 2025 and declared an unsafe structure. Multiple attempts to reach the property owner have been made with no response. A certified letter was sent to the property owner of July 16th and returned undeliverable. These are photos of the property. You can see the state that it's in, the windows and doors are, have been removed or broken. The roof is caving in and there is debris and trash all over the property.
Okay, that's it, right?
The process for condemnation is for a resolution to be approved. The process is for a resolution to be approved by the board. The resolution would then be published and sent to the property owner. If the property owner cannot be contacted, a, the copy of the resolution would be posted on the property. The property owner would then have 10 days to contact the department and request a hearing before this board to discuss the condemnation. If no request is made for a hearing, then the department would proceed with requesting formal bids to demolish the property. The current estimate to demolish this property and clean up the debris is approximately $33,000. If the department does proceed and funds are allocated by the county, then a lien would be placed on the property and at some point in the future, if the property is sold, then that lien would be paid to the county. And I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Eamesworth. Commissioners, any questions or concerns?
No, this needs to be done.
Would agree. Anything else, Commissioners? So, any public comment on this property and the condemnation? Seeing none. Take it away.
Commissioner Gómez dos?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chaparro?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan on this?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Commission follow-up input. If any Commissioner has any follow-up input to add to the meeting today? Now is the time. Seeing none. Brandy, any correspondence?
McKenna Lotterbach versus Doñana County, Maria A. Leon versus Doñana County, Delada Farm versus Doñana County, Daniel and Cecilia Ruiz versus Doñana County, Modesto Martinez versus Doñana County, Gabriel J. Garcia versus Doñana County, and Diana Ortiz Calvan versus Doñana County.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brandy. With that being said, the time is 2:06 and I'm going to call this meeting adjourned today. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.